Good afternoon. I call this meeting to order and we'll begin with a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance by Ms. Bowns.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our, in the physical, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. I am not seeing, well, Ms. Welch, Stephanie Welch, I'd like to recognize any elected officials with our city council. Is there anyone else? All right. Thank you. Thank you so much. I hope everyone in the audience had a chance to go to reach them, to teach them last night. If you didn't, you really missed a wonderful, wonderful opportunity. It was, it was great and special thanks again to all the people that worked so hard on that and especially our sweet Amy, who, Amy Crawford, who was the founder and got this all up and running, what'd she say, 13 years ago. So, anyway, it was really, really wonderful. For your information, several of your board members will be attending the Tennessee School Board Association Leadership Conference this Thursday through Sunday. It's also the state's annual convention for school boards. We're very excited to, to do this. It gives us a wonderful opportunity to find out what's going on in other school boards in Tennessee and also gives us a chance to kind of strut our stuff because you have a very proud board as to what you all are achieving and, and we look forward to sharing that throughout the state very, very much. Also in regard to that, just for some logistics, Ms. Satterfield and, uh, Ms. Bab, I'm so sorry, and Ms. Christie, if I could just talk to you for about two seconds, just logistics on that before we leave tonight, I'd appreciate, appreciate your time. Just a reminder, our November meetings are scheduled for Wednesday, November 7th, and Wednesday, November 14th, and they will be in the main assembly room of the city county building at our regular time at 5:00. All right, are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none. Approval of the agenda, please. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, I'm going to try very hard to do as, as Law Director has instructed me to do. That would be a motion by Norman, second by Horn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Chairman, Chairwoman, members of the board, and good evening, everyone. Couple of brief summary announcements here. We're continuing to finalize our Knox Reads, Knox Advances, and Knox Supports presentation and initiatives. We presented those initiatives to the board at our extended work session on September 28th. Since that time, we've presented the initiatives to our principal advisory committee, our principals, our teacher advisory committee, and the Great School Partnership Board. We're scheduled to present to the family advisory committee next week, I believe that's Monday night or Monday evening on November 5th. Responses to the initiatives so far continue to be encouraging from all groups and we believe that we will have positive outcomes in helping us increase reading proficiency, increasing the number of ready graduates, also helping with chronic absenteeism and then closing the achievement gaps with all of our subgroups. On November 8th, beginning at 11:30 a.m., we'll celebrate the end of the 2018 Knox County Schools Coupon Book Campaign with our school campaign coordinators, our top-selling teachers and students who sold more than 100 books. Lunch will be served by Sausaritas at Sarah Simpson Professional Development Center in the great room. We hope to see you there. American Education Week is November 12th through 16th. On November 15th, Knox County Schools will host Principal for a Day across the district. We currently have 122 Principals for a Day scheduled to be in our schools, so each school will have at least one and some will have more. Luncheon will take place after attendees spend the morning in our schools and we hope that all board members will be able to attend. Knox County Schools will be closed Wednesday, November 21st through Friday, November 23rd for Thanksgiving Week. And finally, to follow up on the information that was emailed to you on Friday of last week regarding our Energy Conservation and Infrastructure Improvement Program with Trane, Owen Novater is here this evening to provide a brief update and answer any questions you may have. Owen is the Comprehensive Solutions Leader with Trane Commercial Systems. So with the board's approval at this time, I would like for Owen to step forward and, and do talk with the board a minute and answer any questions you might have.
While he's coming forward, just a point of privilege, I have just gotten a text that, that our audio is not working and I know we're having some AV issues. Is that, is there anyone that can address that? Okay, thank you. Hold on one second, please. The audio I'm not talking about in here, I'm talking about what is, what is being broadcast. Well, to this kind person that texted me, they're telling me it is working now, so, if it's not, text me back again and let me know, please. In the meantime, if you would go forward, thank you.
Thank you, Director Thomas, and good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members. Thanks for having me. I'll be brief. It's been a while since we've been able to update the Board of Education on the program with Trane, couple of years actually, and so everybody loves good news and we figured we'd share. There's a lot of new folks on the school board these days compared to the inception of this program that goes back to 2007, so I thought it would be appropriate, hopefully you all got this distributed to you. And so, really just, you know, hitting the highlights, the, the program goes back actually to 2005 when the county did a, a procurement for energy services and, and trade was awarded. The schools took advantage of it, as did the county facilities, and you guys have implemented, you know, $70 million worth of upgrades in the schools throughout, throughout this program. It's completely funded by savings that are underwritten by Trane or Ingersoll Rand, and obviously you can see in the, in the letter that the savings to date in the program are running significantly ahead of the guarantee and significantly ahead of program costs. We can't take total credit for that. You all own Zane Fouracre, who's your energy manager, has done an outstanding job in, in keeping the program going and, and it's just, it's been a great effort by everyone with, with super success, quite frankly, recognized nationally. Knox County Schools was presented in 2017 at the Green Schools Initiative in, in Georgia. It's a pretty big event, so. If you, I don't know if you have any questions? I think you probably got more data in front of you than you may want to look at, but it's been a pretty good program, so.
Are there any questions from the board?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. I, I actually just got a text from a second person who is in the viewing audience that is not hearing us, so all I can do is just hope that when it's posted on, on the website tomorrow that the audio will be, will be available then. And I do apologize, I apologize very much for that. All right, moving on, we're going to move to our recognition of our new teacher advisory committee for this year. Mr. Thomas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're so pleased this evening to have members of our teacher advisory committee with us. We've actually had two meetings thus far and another one scheduled for November, I believe, after Thanksgiving and for each month thereafter. Been very productive meetings. I'll have to say, we have a group that's not bashful about saying what's on their mind, which is, which is great. That's what we want and I think everyone feels comfortable saying what's on their mind, so if they not, if not, then see me after this and I'll make sure that you understand you can say what's on your mind. But we have a variety of teachers, the, the committee is selected by teachers, so we have a variety of folks that, on their first, some first year, some second year, some third year, and they rotate off after three years. So what we would like for, have two of our members to, to make introductions. First, August Askins, who teaches science at Holston Middle School and has taught for 14 years. And this is her second year on the committee to introduce a portion of the folks that are here. And then after August makes her introductions, Antoinette Williams. Antoinette teaches at West Valley Social Studies for 17 years and this is her third year on the committee. And what we would like to do is, as your name is called, if you would, please just stand and remain standing until, till everyone's introduced. And thank you very much for being here this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas and Madam Chair, members of the board. Good evening. I would like to present to you the following teachers for the 2018-19 Teacher Advisory Committee. And Tiffany Holmes from Lonsdale Elementary. She teaches second grade. This is her 14th year and her second year on the committee. Nicole Sanders from Chrisdenberry Elementary. Teaches Special Ed. This is her seventh year and her third year teaching, or third year on the committee. Lucius Ervin from Gresham Middle School. He teaches science. This is his fourth year teaching and first year on the committee. Dr. Michelle Keaton from the Paul Kelly Academy. Second year on the committee. Megan Christian from Bearden High. She teaches band. This is her 15th year teaching and second year on the teacher advisory committee. Lori Smith from Cedar Bluff Elementary. She teaches kindergarten. This is her seventh year and her first year on the committee. Blair Harrison from Pond Gap Elementary. She teaches third grade. This is her fifth year teaching and third year on the committee. Stacy Reese from West High School. She teaches English, College Prep, and Honors IB. This is her 26th year teaching and first year on the committee. Whitney Parsons from Farragut High. She teaches AP Chemistry there. This is her seventh year teaching and first year on the committee.
Good evening, Mr. Thomas and Madam Chair and everybody on the board. I am taking up the second half of the list of the teacher advisory. I am Antoinette Williams. I am, this is my first year at West Valley, but this is my 17, 17th year in Knox County Schools, and I do teach at West Valley. I teach Social Studies, 7th grade. Julie Langley is from Karnes High School. She teaches English. She's been teaching 24 years and this is her first year on the committee. Lynn Sharon, she is from Norwood Elementary. She's a behavior interventionist. This is her 30th year teaching and she, this is her first year on the committee. Amy Cox is from Hall's Elementary. She is an ELA teacher with 20 years of experience and it is her second year on the committee. Jim Porter is at Powell High School. He's a graduation coach with 34 years of experience and this is his third year on the committee. Natalie Dowling is from Carter High School. She teaches English. This is her fifth year teaching and their second year on the committee. Ally Umberger is from Sunnyview Primary. She's a kindergarten teacher with 23 years' experience and this is her second year on the committee. Stephanie Lewis is from Gap Creek Elementary, third year, I'm sorry, third grade teacher, eight years' experience, and this is her first year on the committee. Rachel Evans is from South Dole Middle. She is a T-Pac coach. She has 10 years' experience. This is her first year on the committee. Antonia Coats is our KCEA representative and this is her second year on the committee. Thank you.
Thank you all for being here tonight. We really do look forward to hearing some reports from your committee and I know I speak for the entire board when, when I say that we want to be of service to you, so anything that we can do to try to help you, or if you just need to vent, please, please give us a call too because we know that you're the backbone of our system. So thank you very much for being here. Moving on the agenda, we are going to an item that we did not have time for during our annual retreat and that's collaborative conferencing. Ms. Antonia Coats is here, President of KCEA, and also Rodney Russell, and I know that they have some guests with them also, so Ms. Coats, the floor is yours.
So I'm going to say thank you, Madam Chair, and to the school board for letting us present to you today about PECCA because this involves you, between our agreement between the board and the educators of Knox County. I am going to step aside because this is not my wherewithal, I'm not the chair of this committee, but we have Chuck O'Donnell, who is a co-chair on the educator's side, and Paula Hancock that's going to actually present that, and Dr. Russell is actually our facilitator that helps make sure that our meetings are run smoothly, but they will go through the process for you and make sure that this presentation is very brief.
So I, I do want to thank you, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent, for the support you've given us over two MOUs being developed and we are getting ready to begin to work on the third. And so I think it's important that you hear from the teachers that's part of that committee, so I'll turn it over to Chuck and Paula.
Madam Chair, Superintendent, Board Members, thank you for this opportunity to talk to you about PECCA. And you may ask yourself, what is PECCA? I know we have a few new members on the board, so we have a slide there for you. Professional Educators Collaborative Conferencing Act. That's a mouthful that basically says, we get together, we talk about our needs, our wants, our desires, and then we come up with an agreement, and that agreement must be approved by you folks here on the board. There are things that we can talk about and things we can't talk about, and I can read them from this slide, but I think you can read them just as well. Obviously, these are the only areas that we can cover. We can't cover a couple items and that'll be the next slide right there. These are some things that we cannot cover, anything about evaluations, expenditures, grants, awards, those kinds of things, payroll deductions if they involve political activities, we can't get involved in those sort of things. So it's very defined, the act itself is very defined about what we can and cannot talk about, okay? Now, how do we get into collaborative conferencing process? First of all, we have to poll our teachers, our professional employees here in the Knox County area, and 15% of them have to come up and say, we need to petition the board for them to participate in collaborative conferencing. We make a request to you. Then we take a poll of our educators, and our educators, that poll has two purposes. One is to decide what organization is going to represent us at the collaborative conferencing, and the other one is basically get half or majority of the educators to say, yes, we want to enter into collaborative conferencing, and if that happens, then you folks are required by the law to create your own team. Now currently, you have 10 members on your team, many of very administrators and managers within the Knox County school system, and we in turn have 10 members on our team, so we're equal in that regard. And as Dr. Russell said, he is also our facilitator, and I can tell you, it's not a food fight, we get together very well. So who makes up the PECCA team? I think I just talked about those items right there. We are 10 and 10 on either side. And as I mentioned, we consider our team to be a partnership, and I think that's very important in a situation like this. We, we tend to set aside all our biases and things when we get together, and it's really kind of an enjoyable process. I can tell you, in the very beginning, it wasn't like this, but this current board that we have now is really excellent. The Memorandum of Understanding, that's the MOU right there, and it's a joint agreement between you folks and professional educators here in Knox County about how we're going to handle certain items. And the agreement is enforced for three years, and as Dr. Russell mentioned, we've had two of those so far, and we're beginning to work on our third. Some of our successes, I'm going to let my co-chair talk about that, Ms. Hancock.
Good afternoon, morning, good afternoon, Madam Chair and the board. One of the things that we consider a successful desired outcome when we participate in collaborative conferencing and on those allowable items that we can conference on, is that it results in a jointly prepared memorandum of understanding. And as Chuck has just got finished saying, the memorandum of understanding that is entered into is valid for up to three years. And some of the previous successes that we've had, because he did lend some information regarding it, is that the board has already approved two previous MOUs, and we have partnered with Knox County Benefits to improve the 401K program and the health insurance program throughout those last two MOUs. We've also partnered with Knox County Benefits to support workman's comp, workers' compensation for certified employees, and we've also entered into, and we can now provide bereavement leave for our employees. So our new MOU, our collaborative conferencing work, will begin this November the 28th. We will begin our first meeting, and we will use collaborative communication strategies to help problem solve and to understand each other. So basically what we use is we try to do interest-based or interest-based decision-making. One of the things, our timeline, just wanted to give you an update on our timeline, our current MOU will expire September 13th, 2020, and we plan to have work completed by December 2019. Mr. Thomas, our superintendent, will provide and make sure he keeps all the updates, keep you all informed on the updates on all of our work, and he's been very good about letting us know of any issues that you all request that we may need to consider as well. The draft MOU will be available for review and editing through May 2019. So the MOU should hopefully be final by, in a final form by June 2019. So again, we would like to thank you for giving us an opportunity to work with you. The team is very unified on making improvements that are going to be good for all of us, and we are grateful for your support in our process. Thank you.
So I know that you may have some questions or you may not, but I always want to take this time to thank the people that serve on your side as well as serve on our side, and they may not be here today, but if I could, if you can indulge me to try to remember, sometimes I think I'm seasoned, sometimes I have some timers, sometimes I remember, sometimes I don't, and I know that Mr. Thomas will help me because he holds the team, that we, we have a joint venture that we try to remind each other. So I know on Mr. Thomas, there's Mr. Thomas on your side, and it sounds weird to say your side, but I'm, as Chuck and Paula stated, it's much better than what we had before. We used to make agreements and demand what we wanted as educators, but when we're able to have this interest-based bargaining and actually talk about it, it's not bargaining, but we're actually talking, collaborating, and then we come to an agreement, it's, it doesn't, it's not as quick as the process as people believe. But again, I'd like to recognize the people that work on your behalf and work on our behalf. So I know it's Mr. Thomas, Kelly Drummond, John Reiswick, Brad Coram, Jessica Holman, Ryan Seabee, Cindy White, Beth Lackey. Okay, now I'm getting down to the last two. Oh. See, that was just, it wasn't really intentional, Dr. Davis, I apologize. Mr. Davis. Mr. Davis, am I missing, I'm missing one person. Mike Reynolds. Those are the two best of, I'm not saying that anyone's better than the others. I just want to clean that up because I know that Mr. Davis will pull me to the side and we'll have a conversation. But on our side, as you've seen, it was our chair, it's Paula Hancock, Chuck O'Donnell is the co-chair, then we have Connie Mitchell, Antoinette Williams, if you're here, you could raise your, sway yours, Antoinette Williams, Sarah Campbell, Dave Gorman, Robin Bell. Now I'm going down, I'm going down, I'm getting, Laura Kane, Laura Kildair. Did I get everybody? I believe I did. So if I forgot somebody, charge it to my head, not to my heart, because I really try to remember these people, and we should have had it in writing on here, but it's okay. But if you have any questions for us, it would be really great opportunity to do that.
Any questions, Board Members? I do have one, if you would address to the board and also to other employees out there listening. If someone wants to observe or be a part of this process, how, how does that happen?
So just this year has been the very first opportunity, not this year, but last year, was opportunity that you can come and sit and observe, and Dr. Russell is our facilitator, I'm correct? Yes, they can come and sit, but they can't, you know, do the hissing crowd and give an opinion. The challenge is because our work is very in-depth and we try to make sure that we're all on the same page. So when we get outside voices and we can't make these decisions without, it becomes challenging. We haven't had that opportunity, which is, knock on wood, it's really great that we haven't had that, but if it does, we will close those meetings that people cannot attend, but right now, it is, but unfortunately for you, you have to sunshine it if it more than want to, you come. But we're always welcome to attend because we're very nice. I mean, Mr. Thomas is really nice to me and the rest of the educators, so good to know that he's doing a really great job for you.
Ms. Bow.
I'd just like to make a comment. I think it's very important that I, we kind of laugh when you say that Mr. Thomas is very nice to you, but there was a time when collaborative conferencing didn't work that way, and so that is a huge step forward. Thank you.
Yes, and that's why we have two agreements that we try to fulfill together, that partnership together, because without the success of administration and the educators, it could be really challenging, and we just don't want to repeat some of the things that have happened in Virginia or Kentucky or Arizona and those places where you can't come to an agreement, because I know that you're going to do what's right for your employees of Knox County at all, at every expense.
Ms. Bowns?
Yeah, thank you. I want to say, yes, thank you, and I think the opportunity is there and I took advantage of that, trying to educate myself about PECCA and attended some of those meetings, and I think you alluded to it a little bit, in that it is difficult because your all's work is a continuation, so if you just go to one meeting, you're missing a whole big piece of what's actually happening. So not to discourage anybody, but it really is a process and sometimes just attending a meeting is not as effective as it might be unless you can, you know, be at all of them, which is pretty much impossible as a board member, but thank you all because the relationship you all have developed on both sides has really been amazing, so, thanks.
Yes, so those, that's why we have these once-a-month meetings, and sometimes we break into subgroups that could lead to two and three meetings a month, because again, we want to ensure that we're doing what's right for, do what's right for you on your side and do what's right for the educators as well.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and, and really, I could repeat my comments, but I won't, to the, that I said to the teacher advisory committee, much appreciated. I know this takes a lot of extra time and effort and, and your, your coworkers as well as, as your board members appreciate to all of you what, what you, what you do, so thank you, thank you very much. Moving on to our next agenda item, we have a team and tiger update with Dr. Russell.
Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent, thank you for giving us this opportunity to give you an update just on the pilot that we have been working on with the Tiger Evaluation System, and so I'm going to go through some slides that give you a little bit of information that we have gained from our experience and, and then share with you some data that the valuation accountability- And, and then share with you some data that the valuation accountability office has brought forward about the Tiger evaluation. And then I want, again, for you to hear from those that are in the field. So we have Wanda Lacy, a teacher at Farragut High School, who will be here to kind of share her perspective. And then principals from an elementary, middle, and a high school that'll also be available to answer your questions. So I will not take long through my part because I think the other part will be the most interesting for you. But this is the six pillars of Tiger. And it involves around the authentic evidence, which is teachers are able to present their own evidence in this process. Principals are able to collect evidence of the teacher's predominant practice, pervasive practice at any time. So even for that music teacher that is putting on a concert and things that go into managing that process, that can be a time where a principal is collecting evidence on that teacher. It is not built around snapshots as the team evaluation is. The team system, the, for example, a teacher that is professionally licensed, who is meeting expectations, they will have two full observations, formal observations, one in the, in the fall, one in the, in the spring. With Tiger, it is, you look at it more over the entire year. So it is not so much snapshots as it is looking at the practice of that teacher throughout the complete year. Teacher growth is important, part is what the focus is on. Protected coaching is provided to those that do need support. When we talk about, when you hear protected coaching, that simply means that there is a baseline observation that is done by the principal. There is a growth plan that is developed, a professional development plan for that year. An instructional coach takes that teacher under their wing. And they work with them until they feel like they have, have progressed, have grown to the point that they are ready to go back into the evaluation process that year. And so at that point, the principal would come along and again, begin evaluating them. But during that growth time, they are given a window as well as a plan for how you're going to develop. It is also another important piece of this that is differentiated. So there are three stages, and you'll hear me talk about that, and principals can, can talk more on that. But stage one, for us, that is, that is all new teachers who come into the system would enter in stage one. Also, those that on the observation model, on the observation summative score the previous year, if they were below 3.0, they would, they would also be a stage one teacher. So you may note that meeting expectations for the state model is 2.75. Hours is a little bit higher, there's a little bit higher expectation. In systems, other systems that are doing this, for example, Maribel, Maribel's now has theirs at about three, I think it's something like 3.6. So anyone below 3.6 is going to get protective coaching and get the opportunity to, to grow and be at that level that Maribel is expecting. So with Tiger, based on the performance of the teachers, our, our expectations, our, what is acceptable can also grow. It can also improve and increase. And if we had done it from this past year, hours would have probably moved to about 3.2 this year. If we had just taken the numbers and we're, because this is a pilot, we're staying consistent. But we saw that kind of shift with our own teachers. These are just some of the districts that, and it would be in your slide, that are using this model. You will take note that some of the highest performing districts in the state, Greenville City, Maribel City, districts like that are also using this model. The Tiger Way, again, as I mentioned, authentic assessment, using anything that, that that teacher has, that they are presenting in their classroom, that they are using. Much like my, I sometimes use my wife as an example here, who is a nurse. Anything that is going on on any given day can be looked at as part of that nurse's performance. And it's the same with our teachers in this model. Rather than, again, being snapshots that are, that are only a lesson, you're having, you're doing walkthroughs throughout the semester. And anything that is going on, a teacher can say, hey, I'm, today I'm going to be doing such and such, I'd love for you to come by. Principal can go by, and in making that observation, they can collect evidence as part of that teacher's practice. Again, multiple measurements are critical, lots of opportunity to walk through, do observations, as well as that teacher's self-assessment. So the teacher owns a part, a big part of this, their own self-assessment is a critical piece. And they are a part of all the decision-making and part of that professional growth plan that they will be developing. Some of the perspectives that we have gained from this is part of what Tiger says will happen. Evaluation should be about formative teachers' growth more than rating and rankings. And you will hear, you will, our teachers will, may talk about the fact that we, in this situation, the, with observations, there's not always a rating of one, two, three, four, or five put on it. In fact, for the observations, we do not use those numerical ratings. Instead, it is on the feedback. And it is qualitative feedback where you talk precisely about what you are seeing and how that meets the rubric or how it does not. And by the way, the rubric that is used is the same as used in the team evaluation system. It is the same indicators, but the scoring is different. Also, this recognizes that teachers that are high flyers, that, that are already knocking the top out of the evaluation system, there needs to be some freedom given to them, allowing them the opportunity to, to study their own practice. To, and so we, at, at stage three, we have some of our highest performing teachers come together studying their own practice. They certify as evaluators, just as the principal does. And then they do each other's evaluation as, as a team. They can, like, those people in other districts can also participate in evaluating teachers who are at stage one and help with the coaching. But we have, this is an area where we have just done portions of this in the pilot to see how it works. And we, and I think Ron Seabee at Farragut has done the most work in this area. And it certainly has been something that they have talked positively about. The other, the other part of this is the focus on professional growth that has been super critical. The Tiger emphasis is, is on that. And so there is a lot, there is more work that goes in, especially on the front end, where the teachers are having to self-assess. And it's pretty extensive. The good news is, is that it stays with that teacher as they continue. So the first year you do it is the most challenging because it, it's, it's the most time-consuming. After that, you are simply giving evidence of, this is what my pervasive practice, my prevalent practice is. This is what you are going to see consistently from me, day in and day out. And here's the evidence that I really do do this. And, and then when the, when the principal or evaluator comes in, they should see that. Some of the comparisons on team that are, I've mentioned some of these that are different, we've determined. The scoring is a big deal, not having to put a number. And I, I really cannot totally explain this, but not having a ranking of one, two, three, four, or five. But instead being able to say, you know, you're, you're, you're using the language of the rubric and actually talking about what is being observed. The performance, the practice that is, is there is much, seems to be more received or better received. The domains, if a, a principal does not have to go in and observes a full domain. When I talk about domain, it'd be like deciding they're going to do the instructional domain and the, the planning domain today. They can choose the, the, the actual indicators that they want to observe. Something is not observed today, they can go back and, and see, is this something that is being missed in this teacher's practice regularly? But if they have, if they go in and they see that observation, and listen, it happens. You have that lesson, that everything crumbles, it, it, it doesn't go at all like you expected. You thought you knew what your students needed, you get, you, you present that lesson, and for whatever reason, fire alarm goes off and other things, and it, it disrupts that day. Then the, what is going to happen with Tiger is the, the evaluator is simply going to come back. And then they're going to come back again, and then they're going to come back again. And what matters, again, that one lesson where things did not go as well, it does not dominate the overall evaluation process. And so that has been an important piece. And then the evidence collection, being able to collect evidence at any time. When you see something, when you see things going well for a teacher, or when you see something that needs correction, including that, that being a part of the evaluation process, the observations that are going on, that is, that's a big deal. And it, and it really helps the principals and evaluators be able to center in on what that teacher needs. Again, on the summative rating, rather than this just being a, rather than having to average the scores, for example, of a professionally licensed teacher having those two observations, rather than having just two scores that are averaged together. So if I have that observation, or I have an indicator, for whatever reason, I score one, and then I, I score a five on, averaging it, it becomes a three. But if I'm predominantly, if I'm consistently a level five teacher at that, and every other time you come into my classroom and you're doing multiple walkthroughs and you're seeing that practice, in Tiger, that person would receive a five because the principal has the ability, at the end of the observation process, they're going to consider all the evidence, and they're going to give the score into the, for that indicator based on what the consistent practices of that teacher, rather than there just being two snapshots that are averaged together. So that is, is a big piece, and I think a big part of why teachers feel like that this is a, a very fair process. And also, again, the differentiated stages that based on, rather than it being based on the license that a person has, that is going to determine how many observations the person, that a teacher receives, instead it is going to be based on their performance. So if you're a, if you're, if you've taught four years, or three years, for example, in, in Knox or in the state of Tennessee, under team, regardless, if you have reached the point where you are consistently performing at the highest level, in team, you're going to have four observations. In, in Tiger, you would be a stage three teacher, and you would have opportunity to participate as a stage three teacher. You, you're still going to have the, there's still going to be observations, but it is going to give you the opportunity, again, to, to kind of spread your wings and do some of your own self-assessments in a different way and look at ways to, to grow. And it's true for, even if you are choosing to stay stage two, which stage three teachers have the option of doing. The pros and cons of this that we've learned, it's positive and rewarding to teachers as a growth model. The differentiation is important. There's authentic assessment that I think gives a very good, clear picture about where teachers are performing. It requires reflection and self-analysis, and teachers are involved in writing their own growth plans. Ten, the, some of the difficulties with this, ten companies is not set up where a district can do two different evaluation processes. So before, when we, in the old, when we used to do TAP and TEAM, and that worked with what, with the way the state was set up. Today, if we were trying to keep them both, that would be problematic with us. And I'm not sure to, that would be something we would have to look to the state, would they allow that? The other piece of this is our principals, it, it is an increased leadership engagement. It involves more time for our principals in terms of just doing those evaluations. But I think they will tell you it's how they use their time more, more effectively because they're able to focus it on the areas that, and on teachers that really need it the most. So here are the preliminary findings, and I'm going to go through these rather quickly. Veteran teachers in the Tiger model saw scores increase roughly three times greater than team system teachers. So one of the things we would have to be concerned about is just inflation of scores. Now, again, remember, we calculate scores, we put, we score differently with team and Tiger. So Tiger, it's a summative score based on where the teacher is performing at, when they reach the, the end of the observation process for that school year. With Tiger, it is an average of, of the evaluations that have occurred. Linear regression models estimate that teachers in Tiger models scored about almost a half point above where the, the team, I mean, the, yes, the team system teachers with the same T-VAS was. Value-added data from school year 1718 indicates that teachers in Tiger model slightly trailed their team counterparts in, in terms of student growth. Additional qualitative feedback, it suggests that the Tiger system was well-regarded among the pilot schools. 10 to 20% more Tiger teachers agreed or strongly agreed that the observation process was fair, led to improvement in teaching and led to increased student learning. Comments collected from Tiger teachers were largely favorable. The Tiger model felt less stressful, more focused on professional growth. There were comments that identified possible areas that we will continue to look into as a lack of consistency between schools. But in some ways, this system is set up to allow for that differentiation based on what's needed at a particular building. So principals and leadership teams have some flexibility to, to structure observations and structure their walkthroughs in ways that work best for their school. And then also the timeliness of feedback, I think we would hear that in the team model as well. But that is a critical piece that we have to, we need to continuously remind evaluators. It is, it is super important that they be back in there. The state requires procedurally wise that you receive feedback within five days. In team, that certainly because of all that has to take place, it may take that long. Really, in Tiger, five days, if you have to wait five days, it's too long. It should be accomplished in a, in a shorter window. Preliminary conclusions, preliminary evidence suggests the Tiger system can offer a popular alternative to teachers dissatisfied with team. I would say that it is, it's being used by some of the best, some of the highest performing districts in the state. I think it's a, a great alternative to team if a district chooses to go that direction. Evidence suggests there may be a district concern for observation score inflation that I think we would need to definitely keep, keep a look at. I think more of that will be determined based on where they were at the end of this, this previous year, based on what happens with their observations this year. As I said, because of the way scores are calculated, there's going to be a natural increase in that, in that score. There is a little evidence that Tiger observation score increases aligned with any increase in student outcomes when you compare that to the, the student data at this time. But again, you all are familiar with the, the issues with, with the evaluations this year or the assessments this year. But still, I think that that is data that we have to look at and we have to, we have to take seriously and consider, how does it impact teachers as they perform? The other thing I want to do now is I want to turn this over, I want to get our principals and our teachers. But first, I want to invite Wanda Lacy to come up and let Wanda give, give you some feedback. And then the principals will come and just share a little bit. This, I promise you that we will not take too long for this, but Wanda, you want to go first?
Thank you. We love Rodney. He's awesome. He led us through this when we were trying to do all the research about team and Tiger. So I, I have been in evaluating. So I, I have been an evaluator for, of teachers since I did it with TEAM, and I now do it with Tiger. And with TEAM, it was demoralizing. You're, you're in for ninety minutes, and if something goes wrong and they can't cover everything, every indicator, if you can't cover every indicator, you're not really teaching a good lesson, because you're just checking, checking points off. But it was demoralizing for teachers, because if something was wrong, they'd come out and they'd come in at lunch, and they'd just cry. They'd say, that's it, I, I don't have an opportunity, there's nothing I can do. Makes me want to cry now, because I sit there with them. But with, with Tiger, we go in and we, we observe just for a little while. We just go in and, and maybe we look at the beginning of the lesson, or maybe we look at how they end, or maybe we go in the middle and we, we, we see what's going on there. So if it's a good, if it's good, that's great, but if it's bad, they still have room to grow. And they know that they have opportunities. Like some days, kids just don't cooperate, you know? They, they have a mind of their own, and so they can ruin a lesson. But, but with, with, with Tiger, you have opportunities to grow. And so I wanted to talk about a minute for that group working with peers at stage three. So I had an opportunity to do that this year. And so three of my peers and myself worked together, well, last year, and we evaluated each other, and we went in each other's rooms. And I've always wanted to go in other teachers' rooms to see what they were doing, but we didn't, it just wasn't done, you just didn't go in and see. But now, it's kind of like, come on in. I learned more about my teaching when I went in their rooms, I learned a lot about them, but I also learned. I learned strategies that I thought, I thought I knew everything, right? But I didn't. And so for each one of those teachers, working with those top teachers, I grew, and I think they did too. And then we had to sit down at the end and evaluate each other and talk about scores. And so we would try to rate ourselves lower, but sometimes they would say, no, this is what we saw. It was the most, it was the best collaborative, collaborative experience that I've had since I've been teaching in Knox County. It was amazing. So then I also got to mentor a, a level one teacher. And so I went to evaluate her, and I sat down and I started listening, and I thought, wow, she's pretty good. She didn't seem like a level one to me. But I sat there, and then we had a conference together, and, and I gave her feedback. The only thing I could find was that she was doing all the work. She was standing there teaching and telling, telling the kids how to think and what to do. So I talked to her about working, about grouping and working, having the students work together and to figure out, you know, how to solve problems all by themselves. And so I, I told her, I said, why don't you come to my class? I said, come someday to my class and let me show you what I do. We would have never done this before, we would have never, I would have never known somebody needed to come to my class. And I've been grouping since, for years, because it makes the kids do the work, and they learn. Then one day, we'd just gotten into groups, and I, I made the kids get out. I said, okay, get back out, turn back around. So I counted them into groups, and then I, they got busy. And so she and I walked around, she listened to what they did. She stayed with me for probably forty, forty-five minutes, and it was great. She walked around, she asked them questions. And so when she left, you know, I told her I would work with her. So she, I, and I gave her my rubric that I used to score with. And so she went off, got her groups together, and then I went back to see her, to see what it looked like. I think she did a better job than I did. So I watched her to see if I could steal something. This hasn't ever happened at Farragut High School, none of this has ever happened. And, and I really appreciate Mr. Seavy, because when we went to Maryville, he went and stayed all day. We'd have meetings, and he'd be one of the only principals there with Knox County to see what was going on. He supported all of us, he's, you know, he's let us, you know, kind of lead the way, and, and he bought, he's bought into it. Our school is so much better because, because of that. The thing I didn't like about TEAM, you just were, you just couldn't hardly stand that day, because you knew that you've got thirty kids in class, we don't know what they're going to do. We know what we want to do, but we don't know what they want to do. But we don't have that now, it's, it's the, the teachers work together, and they're happy, and we're growing. We, we don't, we want to be good, we want to, and when we see what other people are doing, that makes us want to be better, to work together. And so that's what I love about it. I, I don't like TEAM at all. It just, it's demoralizing, you know? And then you can't get over it, because we, we think we're, you know, we're trying, doing a good job, and when we go in in TEAM and it's a bad day, then we, we just obsess over it forever. But we're not doing that now. So today, we had a department chair meeting before I left, and so I polled all the department chairs. I said, guys, I'm going downtown today, would you, you want to go back to TEAM or you want to stay Tiger? I thought they were going to kill me, I said Tiger, but we love it. And so I hope that you all allow us to continue doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Wanda, and I knew Wanda would tell you what she thought, but thank you again. I'd like now for Chad Smith, Principal Powell High School, Jessica Strickland, Principal Halls Middle, and Beth Lackey, Principal Spring Hill Elementary, and just let them share just a little bit about what's going on in their schools as well.
Good evening. I'm not going to belabor the point here, and I'm going to get right to it. I, I jotted down four main ideas that, that I wish to convey to you about Tiger this evening. First and foremost, I want you to understand that this evaluation system has brought a level of respect and trust back to our building in regards to the instruction that takes place. And that is probably the biggest takeaway that I can give to you that, that I want you to understand. And I think the reason for that is because the true power of Tiger falls under the self-assessment. Because teachers are able to, we, we know the rubric better than we ever have, in my opinion, because teachers are able to study that rubric, and then they submit evidence about what that looks like, sounds like, feels like, in their classroom, with their content, and with those kids. And that's real important at the high school level, when you've got all those different contents going on in the building. Understand that teachers own this process. One of the words that we use at Powell High School is, we don't evaluate at Powell, we validate. In other words, we validate the great work that the teachers are already doing, because they're telling us that, they're submitting that evidence, and we just simply go into those classrooms, and then we have a validation. That's, that's literally, in fact, we've outlawed the word evaluations at, at our school. The third thing that I would tell you, the true power falls under self-reflection. Those conversations that we can have with our teachers have become so much deeper and personal. Teachers collaborate more than they ever have, wrapped around the instruction and the rubric that takes place. And I, I take that back to the power of Tiger, because they do understand that rubric, and they do understand what great instruction looks like. And so to me, that, that, the deep reflection is the secret sauce to, to Tiger. I've had some of the most powerful conversations in regards to instruction since my time at Carter High School with the TAP program. If y'all remember that back, way back in the day. And that was a great thing, and it was all about a real intense coaching and, and collaboration and, and self-reflection. And I have not, in TEAM, I never saw that. But in Tiger, I, I finally feel like that we have gotten back to that level of self-reflection that we had with TAP. And I, I will echo what Ms. Lacy said. I can tell you that Powell High School, we would have a hard time going back to the traditional TEAM model at this point. And so I hope that you will allow us to continue with the pilot program. So I'm going to turn my mic over to my colleagues.
Well, good evening, and I just want to echo what we've heard from Ms. Lacy and from Dr. Smith about the sense of trust and the goodwill that has come to our school at Halls Middle School since we have moved to the Tiger model. When I came to Halls four years ago, there was a large sense of mistrust about the evaluation model, and one that I, like I had never seen. And so for that first year, I spent a lot of the year trying to figure out the root cause and what we could do to fix that. And as someone who had spent my time before in instruction, especially as a TAP master teacher, that broke my heart to see teachers so scared about someone coming into their classroom, even if I was just dropping in to visit for a couple of moments. And it, it all loomed around this idea of, well, I don't want to be a rock solid three, I want to be a five. And so we began to have the conversation when this became an option, would we be interested in looking at the Tiger program? And I have to say, even when we voted, it was a very close vote. My one teacher was the, we were barely eligible to participate in the pilot program. And I sort of begged Dr. Russell, like, can we please do this? Like, I know it was a close vote, but I think this is going to help our school. And I can tell you that my leadership team did a poll of our teachers last month, and overwhelmingly, the teachers said they would not want to go back to the TEAM program, that they loved the Tiger way. And what I've seen as the principal is a freedom to talk about instruction and to evaluate oneself. I think before, because it was those two snapshots a year, unless for some reason you were a new teacher or a struggling teacher who had four evaluations, they were afraid in that self-evaluation to not mark a four or a five, even if they knew that their practice did not reflect four or five level teaching. But they thought, this is it, this is my only shot. And so when they complete the self-assessment document through Tiger, it was a chance to really be honest about what do I do really well, and what are those areas that I could grow in? And from that, my teachers were able to make their individual growth plans. We add an element of coaching through our Tiger program, and that's one of the beauties of the pilot. We've been able to do that because that's what my building needed, and so this has given us a venue to do that. And one of the things I stress to my teachers all the time, I can't, nor anybody can evaluate you into being a better teacher. We support teachers into being better teachers. And through this, because it's helped tear down some of the walls associated with evaluation, and because of the structure the pilot has allowed us to put in, we are able to support our teachers better. So even when we're dealing with a year where our school data is not where we want it to be, we're able to talk about practice, we're able to talk about things that we can improve, and we're able to have a common language around that without a fear of what that's going to mean for them on an evaluation. So I just want to thank you for the opportunity, and I also want to echo the sentiment from my teachers and my leadership team that we would love to continue the program. And I, I do want to stress, I think one of the beauties of this and of the Tiger program when we went to the other districts was that schools can personalize it. And we know that for kids, that's what works in the classroom, let's personalize that learning opportunity for them. And if we want evaluations to really be learning models for our teachers, then it needs to be personalized for buildings and individual teachers as well. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm basically going to repeat what my colleagues just said. I'm Beth Lackey, I'm the principal at Spring Hill, and this is my fourth year at Spring Hill, and we have been TAP, TEAM, and Tiger in four years. So they are terrified of what's going to happen next. But to start with something quantitative, because I have a lot of qualitative as well, at the end of the year, last year, our teachers were given a survey. And the question, it was sent to teachers in Knox County, and the question was, the teacher evaluation system at my school provides a growth mindset. The score for Knox County in agree and strongly agree was sixty-four percent when you add those two together. The score for Spring Hill was eighty-eight point five percent. Yeah, and it had been sixty percent the year before, and the TEL survey from two years before that was thirty-five percent. That's huge. That alone just really cemented it. I was so excited about it that I took a screenshot on my computer, and I actually sent it to Dr. Risewick and Mr. Thomas. I was like, look at this, look at this, I was so excited. Because I'd seen the same thing, our teachers were terrified of evaluations, and they just became these events. And that's not what we want, we just want teach, great teaching to happen every day. And I think that's what this program has supported. And part of it is connected to the teacher engagement in the process. Our teachers can submit evidence, and they love that. They can submit it electronically, we even have a cute little form, because we are elementary school, so we have to have a cute little form, where they can submit student work, and they reflect on it, and they connect it to student learning and growth. And, and they love that because it's ownership, it doesn't become, like my colleague said, an evaluation. It's just part of what we do. And it, so it, there's not that stress about it, and I think that's, that's part of what's helped our teachers to develop a real growth mindset. First of all, two years ago, I had fourteen teachers that were apprentice licensed teachers. Each one of those teachers gets four evaluations, okay? That's sixty-four evaluations for just fourteen, that's not the rest of the building, right? And it, it became just this chore, but with our state, our stage one teachers, our beginning teachers, last year I had eight, who were either a first year or they had had a score below a three. This year I have two, and both of them are new to my building. One is a first-year teacher and one is out of state. And that's amazing. And I think part of what's really helped that growth with those teachers is the coaching that they have access to, they have protected coaching, where someone comes in and works with them, and it's not really any of my business. I sit down with them and we set some goals, and then I just let it happen, I just get out of the way. And as a matter of fact, today I did an evaluation of one of those teachers who had been a stage one teacher last year, and I was blown away. It was one of the best lessons I've ever seen taught. And it's just because she had all of that support. And, and it just, it really touched my heart, because these were little kindergarten friends, and they did a fabulous job. I was so impressed, and it was because she'd had that support. And I think the last part of it was the, the use of principal time. So before, when we did evaluations, I would do the evaluation, and I scripted, and I scripted, and I spent the whole time doing this. And I don't think I looked up, because I was trying to get every word that was said. We're not doing that. So sometimes I'd just sit and watch, I'm like, wow, wow. And I would have missed that if my head would have been in the computer, right? It's amazing, today I sat on the floor with two kids, and we wrote a sentence, and I got to help them, and I got to be engaged in it, and it was such a different process. And, and so, and I don't go home and spend eight hours sorting evidence into little bitty boxes. I could walk out and do the, I, I, half the time before the day's over, the teachers found me, said, all right, I've decided, I've decided what my refinement is, so let me just go ahead and tell you. I'm like, thank you. So it's really been just a different mindset. Teachers are so very open. I've had them walk up to me in the middle of the evaluation and say, now, now I've not done this before, so I want you to watch this real close. And I'm thinking, wow, I've got a teacher who's never done something before, and she's cho, he or she has chosen to do it during this time to get my feedback. And, and I think it's just, it's become so collaborative, I don't feel like I'm spying on anybody. I just, I don't think anybody's nervous now when they see me walking down the hall with my iPad, so they know what's going to happen. So it's, it's just been an enlightening, engaging experience. And, and I've done a lot of different evaluation systems in the thirty-one years I've done this, and this has been the best. It's, this has just been so teacher-oriented, because they own the process. So that's, that's my take on it. Anybody have anything else? Turn it over to you.
Just to quickly mention, Spring Hill Elementary, the, the list of schools that participated, Spring Hill Elementary, Moreland Heights Elementary, Halls Middle School, West Valley Middle School, Powell High School, Farragut High School, Richard Yoclee School, and then we added West Haven at the beginning of last school year, as well as gave them the opportunity to participate in completing this in the process as well. But the, the previous, the other schools were the ones that met, designed, had, we had a very in-depth implementation process with them. And I think you, you hear some of the results of that. So at this point, just also have Ryan Seaby here. Ryan, do you have anything else that you'd want to add beyond what?
Just wanted to...
Go ahead.
I lied, it's two things. One, let me say that there have been two things that we've talked about today that I am really proud to be a part of that work. One is the Tiger, and the other's the PECA stuff, and so I just want to make sure everybody knows, like, those are amazing things, and I think you see the spirit in both of them, or kind of this idea of collaboration, right? And that's a huge deal, and I think that's something that is a testament to the work that everybody in this room has done, and the people that we have here. So thank you all for allowing those things to happen. Secondly, with Tiger, I always felt like there was a lot of rigidity around it, right? There are some very specific guidelines, and in order to have equity between the evaluations, there were certain guidelines, like, once you went in the room, you couldn't really invalidate that evaluation, because, you know, if it was unannounced, and you went in there, you couldn't really go, ah, never mind, it's not really appropriate. In spite of the fact that maybe my professional judgment would say, today's not a good day for this, for whatever reason, right? And the question then would be, if you did say, today's not a good day for this, am I implementing the system with equity? And that's what we want. And I'll tell you that with Tiger, there's so much more flexibility, you know, several people have touched on, you have the option to, when you go into a classroom, you're looking for the evidence that you haven't seen yet, right? So you're not just recording, I've heard again and again, we've all heard it, you know, there's 72 things on that rubric, and it's a good rubric, it really is. If everybody can do everything on that rubric, at some point in the year, is what I would say, then good things are happening in that classroom. So that's kind of the mindset of Tiger, is when I go in there, I've got the evidence here, in fact, what we use is an open rubric, and so we're constantly building on the work that's there prior. And so to be able to go in there and know, you know, I haven't seen anything in, you know, academic feedback, in particular, student to student feedback, so that's what I'm looking for today, and if I didn't see it, then I can say, hey, just so you know, I went in there, I was looking for that, I didn't see it, and the teacher might say, I don't know how to do that, right? And we can say, hey, let me show you another teacher who does it amazingly, and that gives us the opportunity to go back. It's a really, really good system, and I think it provides a little more flexibility, and you've heard that again and again, but I'm super appreciative of that, and I would echo what everybody said, I hope we have another opportunity to do it, so thank you.
So, at this point, we'd like to just open it up to questions that you may have about this pilot, if you have any specific questions. And certainly, I am the least here, the principals and Wanda Lacy, the folks that are in the field, certainly it would be the, when they can answer them, I want to turn it over to them.
Thank you, thank you all. Ms. Bowns?
Yes, thank you. Unfortunately, I experienced TEAM as a teacher being evaluated, and as an evaluator evaluating teachers, and so what I'm hearing is very exciting. I wanted to thank Dr. Russell, because I know you've let out, even though you don't want to take the credit for it, and Ms. Lacy and Dr. Smith, and Beth Lackey, Jessica Strickland and Ryan for coming and sharing with us tonight. I guess my question is, where do we go from here? And maybe you can address that, or Superintendent Thomas, will other schools have the opportunity to opt in? Will we develop it as a system? I don't really know what the plans are for this, but it sounds like exciting work.
You want to respond?
Thank you, and yes, the TAC committee, we've discussed this, and everyone on the committee, I think, is very supportive of Tiger, and I just, hearing our folks talk, I hope you can appreciate the leadership that you're hearing, from our principals, from our teachers, it's just so amazing, I get goosebumps, just sitting here listening to the folks, so excited about what they're doing, so passionate about what they're doing. And the answer is, yeah, I'd like to be doing it everywhere tomorrow. And, but, I have to put the brakes on just a little bit, because, again, the principals have to be ready, and the teachers have to be ready, and I've already had some principals this year talk with me about doing it for next year, doing Tiger, and what we would like to do is, after the first of the year, so that we've got time to make sure we get everyone acclimated to Tiger, and the kinds of things that need to happen, expand the program. You know, again, it's principal and teacher decision, you know, as far as TEAM or Tiger, but, you know, something I talked about, oh gosh, 18 months ago, or whatever, is having an evaluation system where a growth model for teachers, something that's not intimidating, something that I don't feel like somebody's coming in to catch me doing something wrong, but catch me doing everything I'm doing right, and to help me, and I just hear that from our principals, and of course, Wanda, and I think she speaks for volumes of teachers, you know, she's the only teacher here tonight with Tiger. So, I think it accomplishes all the things we talked about, and, you know, last night with Reach Them to Teach Them was great, Terry indicated how great it was, and I think right there just shows, you know, what can happen when you have that positive culture in a building, and you have principals and teachers who care about their students, and, you know, last night our speaker would have been someone probably lost, if someone hadn't cared about him. So, I think all of this just reinforces to me that, you know, gosh, we've got so many great things going in this school district, and that's part of the problem, there's so many moving parts, it's hard to make sure you're keeping up with all the parts that are moving, but I think this one is really going in the right direction. I want us to expand the program next year, and I know, you know, the results were a little bit mixed on the achievement part, but Beth, at Spring Hill, I think on your reading proficiency scores?
I'm reading in math.
So, just some great work at Spring Hill, and Beth's just one of the principals who, where great work was going on all of our schools. So, again, you know, board may want to, maybe want to rein me in, or whatever, but I'd like to make sure that we expand this, and that we're doing Tiger at more of our schools.
And I think there's some things to learn from the pilot, even if you stayed with TEAM, the self-reflection and the self-evaluation is a piece that, we know that that is one of the big difference makers for TEAM, I mean, for Tiger, and that's something that I think that is easily included. The other thing is, if you were, if you decided as a district to go to the Tiger model, the flexibility that Tiger allows you, essentially, the way that many of our schools are using TEAM now, they could continue with that same structure, because they also include walkthroughs. The difference is, those walkthrough evaluations cannot factor into that teacher's overall scores, they do not affect the score of the TEAM evaluation, where in Tiger, the only difference would be, was that those walkthroughs now would count, they would be able to factor into the overall evidence collection.
Thank you. Ms. Bab?
Yeah, I was just wondering, on the Tiger model, are the observations scheduled, or drop in? How does that work?
Thank you for that question. Their, the requirements of state board is that at least 50 percent have to be unannounced. So, we have at least, at least 50 percent unannounced. In some, it varies in schools, as far as if you even get that 50 percent announced They are scheduled, and you are still able to set up a system in terms of just, you know, setting up a regular process for when you're going to be in those classrooms. Principals, one of you all may want to come and kind of share your process.
I will say that the beauty of Tiger is that you give a lot of teacher choice. So for example, you know, because you have the flexibility, we're able to establish with a teacher, what semester would you want your announced visit, versus when do you want your unannounced? Because you, again, you have that flexibility to say that you're really kind of zeroed in on that. I'm blessed that, I think 98 percent of my teachers are stage two, since the fact that we chose not to, because we're still, we're going to wait and learn from Farragut about stage three, but, so we really, again, have a lot of that flexibility, at least I could say that from our perspective.
Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just think it's so exciting to hear people be excited about the opportunity to be able to collaborate and improve teaching on both the evaluator and the person being evaluated. So, thank you for coming to share this with us, and, you know, it sounds like, it sounds like the plan, Mr. Thomas, is to give principals and teachers the option and let them vote. I'm not sure why anybody wouldn't want to go to this method. I mean, do you, would you foresee most principals wanting to move to Tiger? Any idea from?
Rodney, I don't know, you may know more than I, I don't know that all of them would, but I know there's a number that would, and again, I think with the, we do the teacher vote at the school, and that sort of thing. You know, in terms of how many can we add, is there a number on the, on how many you can add in a particular year, or?
Well, you will notice that, I mean, the districts that use this model are smaller districts, so the system that we have, I mean, it would allow us to expand, you know...
So if we wanted to add all schools for the following school year, we could be in a position to do that?
We could do that, you know, the, one of the beauties, one of the strong parts, was especially those initial schools that went through, you know, a summer of laying it out, making the decisions about how to implement, and they, the principals were great about involving their teachers and getting buy-in. I think they would tell you that implementation with this is super important, that one of the issues, one of the problems with TEAM is the way it was implemented. So, certainly, we would, that, I think, regardless of the number that you're going to bring in, being cognizant of the implementation plan and process is critical.
Okay, thank you, Rodney.
Mr. Norman?
Thank you. Thanks Rodney, for all your work, you know exactly how I feel about TEAM, it's a shameful farce that we've been exposed to, and it's an example of how, there's a lot of people making decisions in, about what we do, about education, that have no idea what the effect of those decisions were, there's no telling how many people have resigned or quit, I think, and you could attribute a lot of their troubled experience to exactly this, to TEAM. It's just, you know, it's just a shame. So, I'm appreciative of you, appreciative of your work, and I hope that our system can do this. I don't care if we have 87 schools that are piloting this, I think that by far it's going to be accepted, and teachers are going to love it, and they're going to help each other and grow from it. So, thanks a bunch.
Rodney, is there anything that prevents no evaluations from being scheduled? I mean, I hear this...
In other words, announced or unannounced?
Yes, yes, thank you.
You may do all unannounced, and I believe, do any of our schools, any of the Tiger, now just do all unannounced?
Two and three?
Two and, level two and three, they're all unannounced, because, again, it, you know, that feeling of, oh, if you come in, and it does go south on this day, there's nothing, there's no recovery, they do not have that feeling in this.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's a significant shift.
Yes, it is, I'm very familiar with that. Has there been any way to address some of the concerns about areas that are evaluated that are not teacher-based? I know that the rubric adjusts for that, but still, you know, one of the outcries we heard a lot were specific subject areas and support services being evaluated by people that basically didn't have a clue what they did?
You know, again, when you talk about, even for example, the level, the stage three teachers, where they are doing their own evaluation, you take, you go into almost any school, and they're not going to have three music teachers, they're not going to have three art teachers.
Right, right.
So, you know, if we, in the expansion of this, would there be ways for us to look at involving people between schools for part of that? That would be a possibility. We have certainly, and this would be true for TEAM as well, certainly looked at the rubric in giving more clarification in terms of what evidence to look for, what evidence may look like for, for example, SPED, and actually, the state has done much of that work as well, trying to put that evident, you know, those examples out there.
So is there anything wrong with it?
With Tiger? Again, I think that it is, so much of it, because it is owned at the building level, the, you know, we've got great, these principals have, are exceptional in making sure that the implementation was with fidelity, and the focus on their growth, but I think that just being conscious of that is, would be an important piece. It is owned at the building level, so there is, there is less control even at central office, in terms of how the process rolls out, you're not collecting, you're not getting scores, you know, in, before December, where you can go, where central office can necessarily go in and look and say, okay, is everyone, is all the observation's completed? Are we meeting deadlines? Are we doing those kinds of things? So, the principals and the building level, they have to manage that.
Wonderful, thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Bab?
I guess I do have a question on that, I mean, right now, it's a very small program that's going on, but say it got expanded to all 87 schools, it almost sounds like it could be the end of the year before you might find out, maybe a school has not implemented it well, is that correct? Or, I mean, it sounds like the implementation and really being carried out well by the principals, and the ownership of the teachers and everything is a big part of this. So I guess that would just be my biggest concern, kind of how you talked about it, it is all about implementation and doing it right, and making sure it's done well, because, I mean, from everything we've heard, it's so positive, and you would want it to continue to be positive if it got expanded out.
Yeah, the one thing I would say about implementation, you know, and next, if we were bringing in a group of 20 schools, or however, this group has already done the legwork, in terms of postholing that out and simplifying that process, and we have had, we've learned from mistakes, with the school, the one school we had to implement late, we know that's not a good idea, to do that, that puts stress on this process and on that building and teachers. So, is it manageable? Yes, are you still able to collect data? There, in TEN Compass, if you are switching, if you are becoming a Tiger district, then TEN Compass, it's structured differently, and it allows you to collect some of that information. So, you would be able to, you would be able to follow implementation a little more closely, but to the degree that we're able to do it in TEAM, you would not, you would not be able to do that. You would certainly have to, you know, be trusting the building level leadership and the implementation. Now, in terms of how well it is going, certainly, the, by doing some surveys and some things like that, you could certainly track it in that way, but it's, and teachers not succeeding, that, it's more important than, you know, the most important person to know that is the principal in that building, and they are going to know it early, and this system does give you actually the opportunity to be in those classrooms even more, to track that person more closely, but at central office, you're going, it's going to take the principal notifying someone.
Ms. Owens?
Just some clarification, are you saying that if we had all of our schools using Tiger, then TEN Compass would give us more checks and balances to ensure implementation?
It would give us more, it would be a tool that would allow us to collect the data, to document observations and that kind of information.
And we can't do that now, because we are the most...
We're a TEAM, we're a TEAM district, that's right. So ours is, and we ran into, even just in terms of this past year, inputting scores at the end became an issue for us, and even though we had worked with the state on the front end, so it, what, the way we are right now is, it makes it a little bit more challenging.
And Ms. Horn?
Thank you. My question also involved that platform, so the reason we are... Thank you. My question also involved that platform. So the reason we are able to have these pilot schools, is that because it is part of a pilot?
Yes. We, we petitioned the state to, to do this, to be able to do this. And of course, they're, they're going to want the data and the information. They want to learn what we are learning about the two models.
And so if we get to, if we're, if we have half of our schools using, or if we have two-thirds of our schools using Tiger, I mean, is there a mandate that they're going to, that we would switch to Tiger as a district?
I think that is something that, that Mr. Thomas and the district will need to approach the state about. If you were wanting to expand this and go, you know, go deeper, I, I do think the Department of Education, you know, we, having a discussion with them early, the sooner the better.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Russell.
Thank you.
And I think I'm hearing Mr. Thomas pretty overwhelmingly that, I believe I speak for the board when, when I say we would encourage you to do all you can to get this word out and get these options out so that these principals can, can make this happen this coming year if they, if they would like to. All right. Without objection, we're going to take a fifteen-minute break and we'll, we'll come back at six forty-five. Thank you. An effort to keep things moving. We're reconvening. And the next item on our agenda is report on current literacy initiatives. And I believe, Dr. Ryswick, you're the presenter for us.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board. I will try to be quick. Just to kind of run over some of the high points of, of what we currently do in our literacy plan. And then Julie Thompson's also here if there are specific questions of what that looks like in schools and feels like in schools. So I'll try to hit these quickly. First of all, and I know you all first on this before because we're working out with our Knox Reads initiative, but the goal by the state is by 2025 that we'll be at seventy-five percent of third graders reading on grade level. We're currently at thirty-nine point two, fluctuating in that range. So, so we have some work to do. I'll give you some good news about that in a second. So we have two hundred and twenty-eight third grade classrooms. In order to get to that seventy-five percent, we need one additional student in every one of those third grade classes to be at that on-track or mastery level every year for seven years to get there. So it is doable. I mean, I think that, we think that's a kind of a bite-sized chunk that we can handle. And it's really about focusing our attention to those things. So here's, here's, and I share this, I think, with most of you all before, but just to kind of be public, here's the good news about Knox County schools. And I say this all the time, like a lot of people would like to be in our shoes. We, our teachers work extremely hard, our principals work extremely hard, our literacy coaches work extremely hard. And for that, you can see on my left, your right, that we, where we rank out against other districts. So I just want to kind of put this there so you understand that although we, and I think it is an admirable goal that the superintendent has charged us with, is to get to that seventy-fifth percentile. If we get there, we'll be one of the leaders in the nation. I just want to make sure we put that clear. We'll be, be far ahead of the rest of the state of Tennessee, but it's still something we want to shoot for. So when you look at us against other districts from sixteen, seventeen data, because that's the last comparative data that we have, Williamson County, which has a very different funding structure and tax base, is number two in that. You can see the number of students they serve. Knox County is number twenty-eight. And then when you look at competitive districts with us, in Murfreesboro, Rutherford County, Chattanooga, Nashville, and Memphis, you see that, you know, again, our closest is, is Murfreesboro at, at thirty-two. And again, about five thousand less students when you look at that. So, so really, again, all in all, want to applaud the work that, that is going on right now and the current structures that we have. As we look ahead, and again, if you want to look at some, some other districts that are close to us, Marable City, Loudoun, and again, you can kind of see how we compare there. So we're doing quite well even, even against those nearby districts that we talk about lots of times. So I, I guess I want to preface this with where, where we are next in this, before I tell you where we're currently going. We're kind of talking about what we want to do is, is keep doing what we're doing well while we continue to take calculated risks to make that next step. Because you're not going to make that jump of thirty-five percent just by doing the same thing. We have to think differently about it. So what we're talking to our folks and principals about is, we're kind of, if you could picture like a Jenga game, it's important to know what pieces you can pull out without the tower falling over so you can continue to build up. So these are some of the, the pieces that we think we're having a lot of success around right now. The first of those being the year-long reading course. And just, again, you can read, so I'll kind of try to touch on some of these. That, this is basically what we realized is that a lot of the teacher prep programs, and they're aware of this too and continuing to work on that, there's limited number of coursework that they have to take in order to how to actually teach reading. So they'll take some literacy exposure classes, but as far as, you know, kind of the art and science of how to, how to do that, it's something that's not in all the teacher prep programs. So recognizing this, a few years ago, we began a, a program of our own. And what this allows us to do is, is focus on a grade level typically, and we move it to different grade levels in different years, and pull out teachers to go through the year-long reading course. And the way we do that is there are half-days and they go for nine of those throughout the year. So there may be, there's a half-day that they'll focus on, and our, and our reading coaches, district-wide reading coaches work on that, but they'll focus on a certain skill. Then they've got three to four weeks to practice that in their classroom before they come back for another half-day. We found that that's probably the best way to give them a chance to practice in their context and then also not pull them out for full days because we need them in the classroom as much as we can. So we've targeted different groups for that and will continue to do so, especially really kind of want to double down on that, on that pre-K to third grade to make sure we have our new teachers as they come onboard. And then go back to see, you know, what we need to do in those areas. Another change that you all may or may not be aware of is about two years ago, in, in previous times, there had been instructional coaches that were district employees, district office that were assigned to schools. And so that was kind of the, the coaching network. And about two years ago, we made a conscious decision, instead of those being employees of the central office, they were put into the staffing formulas for the schools for principals to make those decisions. And we called those positions instructional support positions. The majority of those, of the principals chose to keep a coach or to keep a coach position if it wasn't that person because they found value in, in what they brought. We, we support them from the district office as far as trainings and those sorts of things, but they don't report to us. We can't pull them out of the school and have meetings with them. They work for the principal. So some principals chose to do different things with that. Some made administrative assistants out of it, some hired behavior liaisons, and that's what we wanted, for the school to be able to make a choice for what they wanted. So in an old model, those eighty-seven folks reported to us and we, and from the central office side, kind of controlled their activity and their content, what they worked on. Those are, as of two years ago, became principal and school-based positions. So just want to clarify that. And there's a correction on this third bullet point for our priority schools. You, as a board, made a decision last year just to help support that in the budget cycle. So every one of our priority schools have, our three priority schools that are elementary have a reading facilitator and also three designated educational assistants to the reading process. So that is in addition at those schools to what they have in that instructional support position. Those schools happen to also be Title I schools and they have other interventionists and things that work there as well. So lots of reading support in our schools that need the most. And that's where we should place it. So we think that was a good decision and we appreciate that. Excited about the fourth point there. We have had a lot of resources that we've put in our, probably I would say our bottom quartile of schools. This was an effort that Steve Rutter, working with Shannon Jackson, to identify twelve elementary schools that you typically wouldn't think that may need some extra dollars, that may not necessarily have a foundation, but also may not qualify for Title I. But we think there are some places because they don't have a lot of professional development money, that we can invest some of those dollars into those schools and see what they can do with that. So we've pulled some of that money from our Title II A federal dollars and investing, I think it's roughly ten thousand dollars in those schools for additional reading interventions to see what they can do. Because, you know, sometimes you end up with a school that's really struggling and there are a lot of other factors to reading. And then sometimes you have a, a school that really there's not a lot of barriers, but sometimes it's money or it's extra people or it's extra professional development that might make a difference. So these were schools, again, that didn't show the scores, growth scores that we would like to have seen or achievement scores, but traditionally have done pretty well. So we're trying to, trying to broad-based that support a little bit more. Bible curriculum. I'll speak a little bit to curriculum and some of the other things that we talk about, what we do specifically around things like care. But we want to make sure the board's aware of this too. We were kind of ahead of the curve. I'm not taking credit for that because I wasn't ahead of the curve. But years ago, we were ahead of the curve on our reading curriculum and realized that it was important for us to, to send folks out, be trained and developed because it was important to have a high expectation of a, of a reading curriculum across the board that we were seeing in all schools and that wasn't just kind of left to chance whether you had a good one or not. So we have a strong reading curriculum, but at the same time, we want to continue to, to look inwardly and inspect the outcomes of what we're getting there. And so Janet Sexton and her team do a great job of working across the district with that. But an example of where we're looking is Vine Middle School this year is piloting a wit and wisdom curriculum. I know the superintendent's been out to, to look at that and see that in action. Desiree Jones, the principal, is really happy there. And, and you know, one size doesn't always fit all and we understand that. Again, we don't want to throw out the baby with the bathwater for the things that are working really well and we're very confident in ours. But there may be pockets due to hot teacher turnover that you don't have. You know, some schools, and the beauty of a, a year-long reading course is you kind of build on that over time. You build this cadre of teachers that can make those kinds of calls, but we don't have that kind of situation in every one of our schools. So sometimes you need a more stable curriculum that they can kind of learn on the fly as opposed to having three or four years of experience to that. So we're seeing if that works. Again, for us, we have to take some calculated risks that we feel that's a good one that we need to look at. And we're anxious to see what comes out of the Vine pilot, but so far, we're happy with what's going on there. Let me say this again. Even if it works at Vine, we don't think it's the answer for all schools. We, we think our curriculum is still really good. We think that might show us some things if it's working there that we could look at some light schools and see if it makes sense to, to move it into those. But again, no silver bullets when it comes to reading. RTI square coaches, and we've talked about RTI before. We currently, I'm going to talk about micro teams really quick because we didn't get to talk about this in board retreat and I really like them, so I'm going to talk about them. Just, just a minute. But RTI square coaches, these are the ones for the response to intervention and instruction that you guys know some of that from the board that was mandated by the state. And it's the right thing to do, to, to meet kids where they are based on where they're falling out and provide additional supports. We have eight of those RTI. They are district positions, but they are assigned to ten to twelve schools. And they go around working with the instructional coach assigned to that school, the teachers and the administrators in that school because there are requirements to track data points. And that's a bit heavy lift on schools to do on their own. So the, the coaches may gather that data and pull that data. The RTI coaches are coming in and talking about different things they can do in the tier two, tier three, and helping make those decisions because once a student goes into tier three, they could move into special education. So our special education facilitators are there as well. So that is, that's a support that we've provided to our schools. And I'll talk about micro teams in a minute because I think we're doing a little better job of that now. One thing we've always asked our school leaders to do, and it's a research practice that, that works, is to assign, assign your best teachers to those early grades. If you can get a kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, that's where, that's where it's vitally important. And I'm not saying that there are good and bad teachers in this. What I'm saying is that may not be the place for a first year in a first or second grade. I mean, you want someone who has a track record and a knowledge base on how to teach literacy, how to teach reading, because those aren't tested grades, but it comes out in third grade and sometimes we have big gaps at that point. So that's something we've always tried to ask our principals to look at, of those who have the most knowledge in how to teach reading, to really work on those early grades. Care is our foundational skills of reading that we develop internally. So you kind of have two things that happen when you talk about reading. You're talking about standards, so what's required at kindergarten, first grade, second grade. And then you have these foundational skills that, and some of you know this because you've taught this before, taught students how to do this. But you have foundational skills that are also happening. They're not standards, but they're skills that you need to be able to read. And I've listed them there. Fluency, phonemic awareness, phonemic decoding, vocabulary and comprehension. So when you're in those early grades, and I know Miss Bounce knows this, you have both of these things happening at one time. You're teaching the standards, but you're also teaching a skill set in how to read. And so we have that that's dedicated to the, the, some pre-K and up to third grade. And then we have great partners like Great Schools Partnerships. You're familiar with some of these programs as leaders as readers, where we have folks from the community that come in and read and support schools, read to students. Parents as teachers, which really is helping us, that we don't really have a great pipeline to say that's, the school system does it. That's part of Knox Reads that we're talking about. We'll get to that one day. But parents as teachers where we, you know, that's that kind of pipeline from birth to, to five years old. They really do a lot of stuff to work with parents there to give them some kind of lessons that are ready that they can kind of work with with their students. Arts integrated tutoring is an after-school tutoring that we do through Great Schools Partnership as well and helping pick those schools. Teacherpreneur gives teachers chances to, to try ideas that they have come up with and be able to have some seed money to experiment with those. So those are just some examples we have though on those. I'm going to go quick through micro teams. But, so I want to talk, I want to, first I'll explain what they are. So micro teams is not the best name and all my people said, can't you come up with a better name? But by then, we'd already named it. So micro teams is small team for people who didn't know. So what we, what we were looking at was this. We talked as a, as kind of a CNI district team. You know, I think one of the knocks on the district office has been that we have people and then we have schools. And we've really worked hard in the last two years under Mr. Thomas's leadership to try to bridge that gap so that we're adding value to the schools. And so this was an initiative that we launched last Christmas and it really was about how do we talk, because what we find is, you know, when you're a large district, we run in silos. And we, we're doing good work, but we're not talking horizontally. And so there were no, there were no spaces for that. And we weren't necessarily close to the schools in the trenches where the real, where the work happens. People were working hard, but we also need to be close to the work and make sure we're supporting what the schools are doing. So this was kind of the idea on that. So these were the assumptions we launched last Christmas from the CNI department. Number one, the school's the most important component of the learning process. And this whole district, that's why we exist. The district office exists to help the schools and have a positive impact on student learning. The district office has its greatest impact when it works in collaborative teams in support of the schools and that we commit our people and resources to helping schools in their goals. So we took this to the CNI team and said, how do we do this? Like, how do we, how do we take this off the page and make it something that schools really feel? So I said this, and I probably shouldn't have said it this way, but I said, you know, in the end, guys, if schools can't vouch for who you are and the work that you do, we're all vulnerable in a budget process. Like, and that's not a threat. That's just saying, think differently about your work, how we get to that level because we have to add value to the schools. And they all responded well. Nobody got upset when I said that. So, so what we're really doing with these micro teams is looking for a more nimble approach to responding to schools. So, okay, I've kind of hit some of that stuff. So what, I'm going to, I'm going to skip to this one and make it quicker. So we have, as you see on that bottom slide, composition of micro teams. So every school is in a, is in a group of ten to twelve schools and they have a team of support around them. The reason we have, we've broken the district up into eight different teams. Three of those in the secondary level, five in the elementary. So you have fifty elementary schools and thirty-six secondary schools. So the GL, the grade-level director or the supervisors, so that's a Cheryl Hickman, Danny Trent, John Bartlett, they head that team. Elementary level, we have Julie and her four supervisors that head those teams. And then they have a person from our curriculum team assigned to them. So they're, and those are for literacy, ELA, for math, for special education, for RTI, for REA, which is our research and evaluation data team, for our CTE, for our Title I. So these teams, it was so fun to watch. So these teams came out of silos and started meeting regularly, talking about schools instead of just their work and talking about how, and, and so what we started seeing is these folks in schools together. They're required, I'm going to jump in ahead of myself, but they're required to be in school so there's a better visual of what it looks like. Around the school, we have a team member of each of those things. So they still belong to their department for the work that comes down from the state or the work that they have to do at that level, but they also belong to the schools and support the schools. So what we did at the beginning of this year is we sent those schools, those teams out to meet with principals, not to tell them what to do, but to ask them what they needed done. What are your goals for the year and how can our team help you? So the things that we see coming out of that is, we've had principals ask things like, can you help me with this evaluation? I have one teacher that's kind of stuck on this. Can you spend some time with this teacher? Can you help us with, with our, our professional development after school? Can you help us with a PLC, our professional learning community, to help drive that and be part of those kinds of things? So what it's allowed us to do is be much more responsive and they have a point of contact instead of calling the math department. You know the name of your person and they're in your cell phone. And we're able to turn that response much faster. If we adopt new curricula, there's somebody there who's can be in your school and help do that and support your instructional coaches as you need it. So, so we sat down with, again, with the principals, and I was super proud of our teams who, who went out and did this. They keep Google Sheets so they can monitor. We had a meeting just for me to check in at the quarterly, how are we doing with that? And all the supervisors came. And, and we're having an average of twenty-four to twenty-five touches of schools from this team already this year. And so, again, in my conversations, one-on-one with principals, the response time, the, what their needs are being met. And what I love is, it's not a one-size-fits-all. It's what the school needs. So I don't care. As long as they're doing what they need to do and what the school's asking and I think they're driving them toward the goals that they have set for themselves. And I think, again, that's why you'll see when you see on the org chart that we have eight of people, it's because they're part of this. It was a transition for our guys, so I talked to them around this. This is kind of how your, your workload looks. We talked last year. Fifty percent of your time should be in schools, supporting schools, answering things for schools, and fifty percent of your time will be still, you know, there's, there are still district responsibilities. There are still, you know, things that they have to do to work through different things. And, and I'll say again, by and large, they've embraced this. And there was a fear that, are they going to feel like it's double the work and that sort of thing? But they've really, they've been great about it. And I think they've really enjoyed having that close contact with schools and, and enjoyed that. So, one, they're, they're required to be in the schools at least once a month. For our cusp in priority schools, those touches are every other week at a minimum. And I can tell you, Julie's- And I can tell you, Julie's in the crowd, and a lot of those are her schools. She's touching them sometimes two and three times a week there, and her team's there. So it's kind of neat. We have a conference call with the state coming up next week, and what's great is instead of just all the department heads getting on the phone with the superintendent and the commissioner, it's gonna be this micro team that's been on the ground working with these schools, the math person, who will actually be in that conversation because they do the work with them every day. So we're, we're excited about that. And so to summarize, if you want to know what we do on the kind of professional development side and on literacy initiatives, these, this is the, outside of the picture, this is kind of the way we described it to our people. So there's district supports and school-level supports for those kinds of growth. We do district learning days, three of those a year. Those are in-service days, if you think about that, where we can, we have three chances to pull everybody together, and the whole math department's out of school, and I can kind of get a high-level 20,000-foot view. Those are all, those are scoring better. We survey off of those, but I'm gonna tell you, they're never gonna be like the coolest thing. I mean, they're gonna be fun, they're gonna learn things, but again, there's some teachers out there. They're never gonna be this kind of, I left there totally filled. I mean, you're gonna pick up a few things. That's okay. There's still a need to kind of get that 20,000-foot overview of things that are coming down the pipe. The micro team is part of the, of the real touches, and then we do district learning days, and those are every other month that they go opposite of principal meetings. So we'll have a principal meeting that's a little more informational, and then we have teaching and learning days where there's an instructional strand, and schools get to bring, depending on what they want to bring. It can be a coach, it can be an administrator for sure, and it can be some teachers if they want to. But they get to pick their strand that they're working on in their school. If it's a math strand, if it's a science strand, if it's an English strand, and we offer probably 25, 30 different things for them to take, and everyone feeds off, off of the previous meeting that they had. So they're able to pick that and able to drive toward what they're trying to do for their outcomes at their school. So we've tried to give it a lot of choice and voice with that. And then the school-level supports, the in-school PD days, instructional coaches that, again, belong to them, are staffing their professional learning communities that they set up the way they need to, and then observation and feedbacks that you've heard from things like Tiger. So these are the ways teachers are getting touched and are getting touched by our team and then also by the school team so they can continue to grow and have, have some feedback in that. So I was, I wanted to throw that in too, because I want you to think that our, how our structure is, when you look at the org chart, doesn't always tell what these folks do. So that was real quick on what we're doing around literacy right now, but I'm happy to answer questions, and I've got Ms. Thompson if there are additional questions about schools to that.
Do we have any questions?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. One question on the, the schools that have had the educational assistance added. Are, is there, is there some assurance that those assistants are working on, with students that would, that will directly address the literacy issues?
There are, but I'm gonna let Ms. Thompson, because they're all her schools, come up and answer that for you.
Thank you.
Yes, the teaching assistants that have been hired are working directly with the literacy coach that was hired as well, and they're working with students probably 90% of their time.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Might be a little difficult formulating my question, so just help me out, because it's a thought. I see on here roughly one more student hitting the mark per third-grade classroom, and that's also given that the students that we have that are on the mark stay on the mark, right? Is there anything within this plan or the future plan or literacy that's taking care of the summer reading loss or the, the, the loss of, to make sure that we have everyone for seven years?
No, I think that's great. I'm, I'm not sure I can make a seven-year commitment, but we'll, no kidding. So, no, that's a great question. And again, part of, a little bit into Knox Reads that we're getting into. So, so what we do have currently is, is the Read to Be Ready programming that is, that's happened, especially in the priority schools, and they have summer programming for that, focused specifically on reading. There was some good information from the state across the board. They saw gains in schools where that happened, so that's a good thing, and the state provides funding for that. For us, again, part of the Knox Reads, when we get into that more, more fully, is that part of it is us trying to position ourselves, you know, poverty, literacy, some of the mental health and those kinds of things. Those are not just Knox County schools' issues, those are Knox County's issues. And so what we're trying to do, knowing what our budget is and knowing where, we're not trying to be all to everybody, we're trying to go, we're pretty good, and from the data there, and I'm, don't take credit, because I'm not the guy good for this, but we're pretty good at reading, we're pretty good at developing curriculum, we're pretty good at developing interventions, and what we want to do is come along, community partners, and tag on that. So if I'm gonna randomly throw people out who haven't committed, and thinking, you think Boys and Girls Club, you think YMCA, you think people like that, they do a great job with summer program. We don't want to take kids to the pool. But what we do want to do is be really good at reading and offer those kinds of services, and that's part of what we're doing in Knox Reads. Who would like to do it? We're thinking even, you know, daycares, we're thinking about any kinds of childcare things that we can help talk to them and help get into, again, to that pipeline to be able to do those things. And we feel like there's community partners who would probably want to partner with it, because, again, there's, they have a strength, we have a strength. Why don't we come together as a community and see what we can do to tackle it?
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to commend you and your team for addressing some of the issues that, that our community has had around just kind of the silo of the district office and the, and the schools. So it sounds like, and from what I, what I hear from the schools, they're very happy with how the micro teams are functioning. So thank you for addressing that concern, and I hope that, I hope that also helps communicate the, the true desire for a culture change for Knox County schools. So thank you.
I have one question, Dr. Ryswick. On these micro teams, the, are e, are e, each of these teams, are they all central office supervisors?
They are not. Majority of them are, so, so we did some, and we told you guys, I mean, you all were aware last year too, we did some reorganizing. So some of these are coach-level positions that are district-level positions.
Okay.
We had to try to shore up to get eight. We had to move some positions around to get to that level. And so majority of them are, so when you look, like, we have, I'll give you an example. Math department, Gary Petco is our one math supervisor.
Okay.
And then there are seven people who report to him, and most of them are at the coach level, and, oh, they're all at the coach level. So what, here's the other thing we've seen from that that's been great for us, is we're able to build succession into that, as opposed to, not that I ever want Gary to retire, but when that time comes, you know, we're not just going, what do we do now? He's, he's able to build some expertise within that team, so he's not the thing for everybody. But no, so we're able to do that. Majority of those are coach positions that are aligned to that.
I like, I like what I'm hearing. One reservation I, I have is, how effective can, can people be when they only touch a school one time a month? As far as really being that piece that contributes and adds to our kids?
Right. They're, they're available a lot more than that. Again, their touch is, and I'll let Julie, because she, she runs a micro team, they, they touch more. I'm saying, so we had to, we didn't have any guidelines of any touches. So that was our beginning place, to say, you're required to be there and have a documented touch. Like I said before, we've had, most of our schools have had probably 24, 25 touches in the first, you know, two or three months.
Right, right.
So they're available when, so when they, when they sat down with the principals initially, and they said, here's what we need you to do, they got on schedule for all those things they needed to do. So it's not like they're doing it just one time a month. That was just part of our framing conversation to say that. Julie, you might be able to speak to that a little more.
And I know, I know, Julie, that yours will be the exception because of the way that you operate with, within your group.
Well, but I, but I will say, each of my supervisors oversees a micro team, and all of us are able to be more responsive to principals, because principals now, instead of before, when Anne Stennett, she was a fabulous math supervisor, but people were hesitant to reach out to her because she was really servicing all 50 elementary schools. And now, I believe, with the micro team concept, they know, okay, I have Dustin DeArmond as my math person, and so they know that he's only serving eight schools. So they're, they're very quick to reach out to him if, if they've got a concern or, or need some support for a teacher, or want him to come and help with PLCs. So he's much more accessible because he has fewer schools. And, I mean, all of my principals talk about how the micro team people are coming and supporting them in much greater ways than we have in the past.
Oh, good.
It's, it's been good.
Good. Thank you. You did a good job, Dr. Ryswick. Man, you got that out in a hurry. Thank you for that. Thank you. Next agenda item. Several board members have gotten emails wanting to know where we were with the strategic plan, what our timetable looked like. I asked Dr. Thomas to please, or Mr. Thomas to please put that together and give an overview so that our public will know where we are with that.
Okay, then I'll, I'll be brief, brief as well. So at our extended work session, we talked about the three priorities that the board is interested in, and we've adopted, I think, maybe not by official vote, but the conversation around increasing student achievement, building positive culture, eliminating disparities. So currently taking for the month of November, let me begin with the end in mind. What we hope to do, if this is acceptable to the board, is have you a draft by the December workshop, that, that, and then the board would have as much time, I mean, whatever your timeline is, at that point, taking the draft and making sure that we've covered everything. So right now, what we're doing is, is taking the three priorities we talked about, putting the, and aligning those with the, the work that's already been done. I think a lot of our great work's been done with the community and the meetings that we had, so, or have had, and so that's, that's taking place. Also, with the Knox Reads, Knox Advances and Knox Supports, we've talked about those initiatives and incorporating those initiatives into the strategic plan, and then developing, and a lot of this work's been done, but with the metrics, inserting the metrics around the, the components of the plan so that those are measurable objectives. And then, in addition to that, working with the financial component of that, what does it all cost? I guess I want to be very careful, though, that whatever that number is, that we don't look at that number and say, we can never achieve this. I don't want, yeah, I don't want that to get in the way of actually implementing the plan, and, and you've heard John and Dr. Ryswick kind of talk about, taking, looking at things that we're doing right now that maybe are not working, okay, so can we take that money and do something a little differently with it? And, and, and so I know he's looking at that. Some of the, the pieces, when we heard about the MOU tonight, we want to give teachers a raise, and it's been, I'll tell you what, I, I, the numbers are in my office. I wish I had them memorized, but we've, over the 60 or 70 teachers that have left, probably at least three-fourths of them have gone within 20 miles of our school district, just looking at the adjoining counties. And I'll, I'll get you the specifics on those numbers, but I'll sign those sick leave requests. It's just people going to Mariville, people going to Oak Ridge, so that, you know, we get cherry picked. So, you know, we've got to figure out a way to, to pay our teachers, and I know we've had a conversation around that with strategic plan and, as well as the MOU. So, so that's, that's kind of where we are timeline-wise, is by December workshop to have the board a draft that you can look at and, and advise us in terms of how you want it to change or to accept it or whatever, so.
All right. I know that a lot of our concerned citizens that are following this closely were, had concerns about it coming out and this, voting immediately. I'm just kind of talking out loud here, thinking that probably it would be January then before we would sit down maybe and revisit the new draft, and, and that would give us plenty of time to make sure that the community has, that has a chance to look at it and, and, again, give, give input. There any?
One, one other thing, we're, we've got next, not this coming Monday, but next Monday, a meeting with some community members about, wanted to meet specifically with, you know, with us, with me and staff. So we, we're doing that Monday week, too, to make sure that we, you know, we're still listening and still developing this, and want to make sure we are as inclusive, you know, as we can be with, with what we present to the board.
All right, all right. Any comments or suggestions, recommendations on anything additional that we can do that we did not do before to try to make sure that everyone that wants access to the plan can get it? All right then. Moving on to our next agenda item. It is the strategic compensation and retirement incentive proposal. We, we got a introduction to this at our board retreat. One of the, one of several issues that were brought into this was a realistic timeline, maybe an, a more solid numbers about perhaps what we, what we might or might not save from this. There was talk about extending the salary schedule so that our, our more seasoned teachers could still continue to benefit. So there were several things we threw together, and I know, Scott, that you sat down and took all these to heart, so we are asking you again to talk with us, give us an overview of, of a possible timeline. There's a lot of interested teachers, I know, that are trying to listen tonight. Whether they can hear it or not, I'm not sure, but the floor is yours.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, board members, superintendent. I thank you for the opportunity to, to kind of speak about this certified retirement incentive plan that we've put together. Want to start kind of with an overview of what, what is the retirement incentive plan? What are we using to incentivize folks to retire? I want to start from the, the emphasis that our intention is to reward those who have spent a number of years with Knox County schools. With that in mind, for a person to even be eligible for this, they have to have had at least 10 years of service with Knox County schools. And, and also, the second requirement is that they're eligible to draw a benefit from TCRS, and this requires that they do that. So they have to have at least 10 years of service with Knox County schools and be eligible to draw and apply for and receive a benefit from TCRS. Essentially, what we're going to be doing is we're going to be alleviating the stress that most people have when they retire, which is insurance. So our intention is to provide all employees, whether they have our insurance or not, a stop-in for the purpose of insurance. If you're continuing your insurance in retirement with us, then this stop-in is going to go to offset the cost of that insurance. And this year, this year's amount, for example, would be $344.85 a month. And so every month, our retirees would receive that stop-in, whether they, they have our insurance or not, and this is while they're in retirement. So we, we decided to do that so that there's not, we, we have a number of employees that don't have our insurance, and so they are unable to continue their insurance in retirement through us, but perhaps they're on a spouse's coverage. And so we, we didn't want them to, to not be taken care of in this incentive, so we decided to provide a stop-in for those, those folks. Now what you'll see on the board, that is the, the cost to continue your insurance in retirement based on the number of years of service you have as a certified teacher. This isn't applicable to classified staff. This is applicable only to certified staff. Classified staff can continue their insurance in retirement, but it's, it's at a higher rate. So when we look at that, those, that top circle there, that is the rate for employees who have at least 30 years of service. So there's a discount that's provided by the state when you have 20 years of service, and there's another discount that's provided by the state when you have 30 years of service. So what we're committing to is we're committing to pay a stop-in indexed to the amount of retiree-only coverage for our richest plan, which is the premier plan. That's where we came up with the $344.85. This past year, there was a two-and-a-half percent premium increase. So with this retirement incentive, we're also promising to maintain, if, if the premium if, if the premium goes up 2.5%, we're going to pay 2.5% more in those years. And we are committing to do this, let me go back to that first slide. We're committing to do this until our retiree reaches the age of 65, but not to exceed 14 years of service. So that will bridge the overwhelming majority of our employees until they, they reach the Medicare eligibility age. And that's, that's the intention of this. If you have a teacher that started teaching at 22, then that teacher could retire. Let's say they could retire with 29 years of service and a year of sick leave at 51 years old. So we would be committing to pay for this stop-in indexed at that amount until they were 65 years old. Now, if we go back to that chart, there, let's say that retiree only has 20 years of service. Well, we're going to be providing them with that $344.85. And their coverage, perhaps to continue at retirement, would be the $447.75. So that amount could be used to go towards that, that premium and kind of offset the cost of it. And that's, that's the, the purpose of that. In doing so, we identified 688 folks that are eligible for this. In the first iteration, we had about 714, but we have really looked at the numbers and honed in on 688 folks that are eligible to retire. The majority of those folks meet our service retirement eligibility, which means you are vested at 60, or you have at least 30 years prior to 60. So that means you get an unreduced retirement benefit. The 55-year retirement benefit means you have at least 10 years of service, and you're above the age of 55, and your benefit is reduced by only one factor. And then the third is 25-year retirement. The 25-year retirement in this incentive plan, I don't think we'll get a lot of pull from those folks because there is a double reduction. There's two factors that reduce their benefit for a 25-year reduction. I will say this, though. There are 18 folks in that 140 that can, with their sick leave, because sick leave counts towards their retirement benefit, will reach 30 years of service. So those folks really should be down in the service. But for the purpose of this, you never know what possibly happens. Maybe they have to utilize their sick, sick leave. So for the purpose of this, those folks were in the 25-year numbers. Our cash flow analysis, and I feel pretty good, really good about these, these numbers. Our total cost for retiree, looking at benefits and everything, and as you recall, this past year, for the legacy, TCRS legacy, the rates went from 9.08 to 10.46. Since that plan is closed, we can, we can see that plan continue to increase. So the, the folks that we hire to replace our retirees are coming in under the hybrid plan, which is a flat rate cost at 9%. There's going to be no increase to it. It has a, what we call a cost-cut measure to it. So the, for example, retiree, retiree that's, or an employee that's at the age of retirement, on average, costs the district about $79,000 for that, that particular position. We, a new, a replacement for that, in that position, when the person decides to retire, that position, on average, we hire in those folks at about step six with the bachelor's degree. And that's about total benefit and everything cost of about $62,000. So you're looking at the difference there of about $16,000. So when we take into consideration the stop-in that we're providing these retirees, for every position that we replace, so for every position that we refill, we have a cost savings of about $12,700. So that, so for example, if we have a budget need of $2.5 million, then that can be accomplished when 196 people retire. That, and we replace all 196 of those folks. Now, I'll say this. I think this retirement incentive program, the sky's the limit when it comes to, to this plan. It gives us the opportunity to make the decision. We know that there's going to be $12,700 savings in the positions that we elect to replace, those irreplaceable positions that we have to. But it also gives us an opportunity to look at, are there potential redundancies in some areas? So that we can completely reduce a position. So that we can look, is there, is there a place where we have some, some redundancy, perhaps in a, a level of bureaucracy? Or, or in another position that we can afford to maybe get rid of that position and reallocate some, some resources? In those positions, you can expect to make about $75,000. The nice thing about it is you're not having to, if it, if it comes to, and I have to say, we're, we're in a, a pretty good economic time, and we're not able to give our teachers raises. And that's going to have a negative impact. So if we're able to look at a situation where we could potentially right-size in some areas, and then be able to then reinvest back with salary and benefits and some things like that, I think this would be a great opportunity, a good vehicle to, to accomplish that. I know there was a concern that we talked about, about the sick leave payout in terms of the budget consideration and impact. And since this wasn't kind of on the forefront last budget cycle, we, we do need to talk about this. When we talk about the sick leave payout, for those that, that are kind of, may not be aware of that, we give $100 per sick day to a retiree so long as they give a 100-day notice, calendar day notice prior to their last day worked. If they fail to give the 100-day notice, it's $60 a day. We budgeted last year about $1.8 million for paying out those sick, that, those, that, the sick leave. I think by looking at the numbers, it's, it's kind of hard to predict human behavior. What's nice about this plan is we have cost savings if we replace the positions, and we have cost savings if we reduce in those positions. So it allows us to, when we know how many people that we have impacted by it, we can better make adjustments to the budget. We can look and see exactly, you know, for wanting a certain amount of money to provide teachers with a certain percentage raise, then we can make those decisions on those numbers to fill those positions. I estimate that probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 3 to 350 will probably accept this retirement incentive. And so if you look at the numbers, to kind of give you an explanation of that, the total, all, all of the, if I, if I look at the total number of sick days, on average, that people have in our identified list, on average, there's about 99.3 sick days that, that these folks that have been identified have. So if we look at $100 a day and then multiply that by 300, we could look at that bottom number of about 2.0, almost $3 million in paying out sick leave. Now, we've only budgeted 1.8 to that. So on the lower end, we're looking at about $1.2 million where we're under-budgeted in that area. If we look up on the, the higher end, the higher end, if there's 400 people, you're looking at a budget deficit of about 2.1. The thing about this incentive is our cost savings is in next year's budget. So, you know, having talked to the, the finance department, there may be ways, if we had to go into fund balance to, to pay for this, we would have resources in the next year to reallocate. And, and I would encourage the board to look at those resources and allocate those in the front end and that budget to take those savings to offset the money that you're, you're front-loading in this year. So that's, that's something, a consideration. So one of the things that's great about this is TCRS has a very generous return-to-work policy. And I think that honestly, we can exploit that to the benefit of our employees and our retirees and, and the benefit of the district. So, for example, retiree with about 30 years of service, they make about 47% of what they made as a teacher. The greatest thing about those positions is you're not paying your 5% TCRS, and you're not paying your Social Security, FICA. So that's about, that's about 11.25% savings that you're not paying in retirement that you were paying actively. So when we look at those numbers, and a person comes back into a 50% position, so we've taken a one FTE, one position that was full-time, and we've split it into two part-times in terms of a, two retirees. Essentially, the retiree who comes back into that position is making about $6,000 more on average, working in that part-time position, drawing their full benefit, working part-time, than they were making in a full-time position. So it's a win to the retirees. If we look at KCS costs on that, our cost savings, our cost savings is even more significant than the, the cost improvement to, than employee. So when we look at that arrangement, the district having two active employees, if you look at that position, it's about $79,000. That includes benefits and everything. Two half-time retirees, the nice thing about it, full transparency is, we don't have to pay that 10.46 TCRS. We don't have to pay the benefits cost for those two retirees. That's about $17,600 of savings for us in that one position. Think it's, I think it's great, great opportunity. So, real quick, the, the, the calendar that's kind of laid out, if the board, if it's the pleasure of the board to move on this in November, because I think there is a, a thin, it's kind of like threading the needle time-wise to be able to do it this year, and November's going to be the ideal time. Anytime that you have a retirement incentive, you've got to abide by EEOC guidelines. It's the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, which allows period for consideration. And to fit inside of that window, it would be November. We would be pushing it too close to be able to do it if we pushed it off any. So essentially, what would happen if the board took action in November for this program, my office would send out both electron, by email and by US mail, letters and applications to the people that have been identified that we talked about. So that would go out on November the 19th. We would also have a period, which would be through November the 30th, where folks who were not identified but think they meet that criteria to apply for consideration to my office. So that way, we can, if, we can take their, their situation, and we can look at it, and we can verify that if they do, or if they don't meet that criteria. From that point on, they have a period of consideration. And that period of consideration will be from the time they receive those documents until January the 18th. I think it's 19th on the slide, but it's January the 18th is when that time elapses. We'll make that change. But on January the 18th is when those applications are going to be due. So on January the 18th, we're going, we're going to know how many people have elected to do this. We can begin at that point in time, looking through what kind of budget impacts that we're going to have, what kind of reorganization that we're, we're going to do, and what kind of magic number do we need to reinvest in benefits and salary in our employees? So at that, at that point of January the 19th, January the 18th, we've got a good idea of how to make the math work. There's about a window, about a weak window to withdrawal. So if a person has submitted their application early, then they'll have a period during that week following to withdraw that application, withdraw consideration of the, the program. So after that, I think it's the 27th of January, we'll know definitely for sure how many people are, are going to be taking the, the Certified Retirement Incentive Program. That's plenty of time for us to try to make those decisions and present a budget sometime in April. That would, that would be all-encompassing of our goals and objectives, to appreciate our employees and a lot of things like that. So when we think about this, one of the largest concerns are how are we going to replace, you know, if we, if we're going to replace a lot of positions, we're looking at a lot of turnover. My recommendation in this is that on, and I, I've placed it there on the bottom, on July the 21st of 2019, we're going to have a retired teacher fair. So if you're a principal of school, of school A, and you have a math position that you couldn't fill because you had maybe somebody leave or vacate that position, then we're going to have a retired teacher fair, potentially. And we're, we're opening this up to surrounding counties. If you retired from Oak Ridge, come do this. If you retired from Knox County Schools, we're opening it to everybody to come and look at those positions that we could potentially take from one FTE, split into two part-time positions and reemploy a lot of our retired teachers. It was another concern that we have. If we've got three, if we've got 350 people that retire from us all of a sudden, that's a large brain drain on the organization. So with this arrangement, it allows us the opportunity to retain some of that knowledge and experience. And I think that, that's extremely beneficial. So that was a lo, that was kind of a long overview. I want to leave time for any kind of questions that you may have.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really like this idea, this concept, and I, I'm really excited forward to work. There's a sense of, I'm a little scared, because we've planned for 300 and we planned for 400, but what happens if we get 688 to say, "Yes, I want to do it"? And so, which could be a possibility. And so I just want to throw it out there that I would like for us as a board and just central office to really have a tight plan to prepare for if we have this big group of people exit Knox County Schools.
Absolutely.
I guess a little bit on that concern is, have we looked, school by school, at some of these numbers? Are there any particular schools that could get particularly hard-hit by this?
Absolutely. We, we've done an analysis on that. For example, the school that would be hit the, the worst was, let's see, Farragut High School, Powell, and there was one more. They would have potentially 18. Now, I think the, if we, if we look at our schools of highest need, there's not very many at all that's identified in those schools. But we're looking at some schools are, and we're not looking at a lot of schools, but they will range anywhere from 18 to 15. And then the rest of them are from four, five, six, and areas like that. So we, we've done the analysis across the board. We've even looked at subject areas that are going to be most hit. You know, I could tell you, for example, the, the total number, the, the majority of teachers in this particular group are related arts teachers. So the, the majority of teachers in this group identified are related arts teachers. We know that there are some, a significant number, I think there's 27 assistant principals that are identified. I think there's about, I'll have to get those, I've got those numbers written down. But we have looked at the analysis, and I've provided these numbers to Dr. Rieswick, too, because essentially, I feel like those organizational questions are probably not questions that I can answer. It's not my expertise. And so I provided them to Dr. Rieswick to look and see if, if he's concerned with the numbers of potential attrition and losing in certain areas. So I want to get that right. There are 35 assistant principals that have been identified, and 27 principals that have been identified. 14 supervisors that have been identified. And so we, we can, we can look at a lot of that, that information. I'm excited about the fact that it does give us an opportunity to do some, some different things.
Yes. I like the idea, and I think it's very visionary. But have we been in talks with Tennessee Consolidated Retirement Systems where, I mean, we could potentially give them a large number of retirees? So have you been in consultation with them?
We have. Drew Freeman is the Director of Outreach, and we've been in conversation as far back as August, when these talks began. I didn't, I didn't want them to be blindsided. So when there was discussion about potentially me speaking at the, the board retreat, I called Drew. I said, "Drew, I want to give you a heads up." Provided him with all the details so that he had that. So I didn't want to blindside TCRS. So we have made them aware of this.
Okay, thanks. I actually served on, served on another board with Drew, but I didn't know he was the one that was handling it.
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, thanks.
A few questions here, Scott. This 10-year requirement with, that has to be that they've worked for KCS?
Correct.
So even if, if they are teachers or employees that come to us with credit, with TCRS credit from other jobs, they still must have the 10 years with us before they could be considered?
That's correct. To me, it was a big deal that. I felt like, I mean, we really did, if somebody worked 28 years for Blount County and they spend two years from us and they come. I, I wanted them to be vested with Knox County Schools. And I felt like that 10 years was a fair number. And so those folks, like, for example, if we look at the total number of people that are eligible to retire, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of about 800. So if we look at the total number that have at least 10 years and meet this criteria, it drops down to 688. And I think that's important to value their experience with Knox County Schools.
Okay. So it, I think I heard you say that this amount that would be supplemented for insurance is, is regardless of whether they personally need it or not, that this is an additional $340 a month that they would receive for a maximum of 14 years?
Correct.
So if someone, if this is the hang-up for them, then they'd have to pretty much be 51?
That's correct.
To be able to retire, all right? I, I echo Ms. Bounds. I think this is a very wonderful thing to put out there. I'm, I'm optimistic that the brain drain might not be quite as severe as we think that it is. On the other side of that, though, if, if we do truly have people that the only reason, or the main reason they're staying is because of that, then, then I, I feel like we need to allow them to, you know, to look at other options for their lives, because nobody has to do this.
Correct.
It's merely out there. Am I correct in thinking this would be for this year only?
That is correct. It would be for this year only.
All right. And one other thing I know we were looking at was, in an effort to still have our, some of our old timers, I can say- of our old-timers, I can say that because I was one, still continue to feel valued, though, a caveat in here was looking at extending out the step.
That is, and that, I think, looking at, and we're, and talks about that, I think it's important that if we go this route, and use some of those resources to reinvest on the back end of our teacher scale, and maybe have some kind of commitment over the next five years to add a step. I think there's still some discussions in that, I think there's some other departments that are weighing in on that, looking at those numbers.
And speaking to that, Ms. Drummond, did you, Dr. Drummond, did you have anything you wanted to add as far as, I know that you were asked to, to look into that as our HR director?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We did look at this, and based on the fact that you would like to see a longevity from a strategic compensation standpoint, we have put together a committee to look at that. And the cost to have an increase of one step, currently, we're at a 20-step at this point in time, from 1 to 19, based on the years of service, to go up to 25, we looked at other districts across the state, and we would like to extend the step range to 25. However, due to cost, we would recommend that we increase it incrementally, and each year go up by one step. The cost to do that would be $508,000, and $508,000 per year to do that. So we would recommend, as part of this retirement incentive, to look at this in addition to that, and we know that there's a cost for this year, but we would ask for this cost for the next budget year, to be able to allow for the step for those individuals that would choose to stay, and we would be able to incentivize those individuals to stay. I think it would also help with that loss, potential loss of the brain drain, because individuals who make a choice to stay not based on retirement insurance, and they would like to stay teaching, this is an added incentive for them as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. And I hear you saying that this is something that, in fact, I think we've requested that it be put on the December agenda for a vote, so...
I think November agenda.
I'm sorry, November agenda for a vote. Are there any other concerns, questions, comments? One thing I did want to stress, too, to those that might be listening, is the prospect of job share is a prospect only.
Correct.
That any, any of our employees that might choose to take advantage of this certainly can, and we hope will apply, but one is not contingent on the other.
That's right. What we've done, especially even with the retirement teacher fair, that is, IRS requires a bona fide retirement, and TCRS defines that as a 60-day purge window. So you can't offer, you can't offer anybody a position inside of that window. Well, that allows for that time period to elapse, and then on July 21st, or whenever that retirement teacher fair is, we can actually offer jobs because we've satisfied that requirement.
All right. And I believe I heard in discussions that this decision about whether a job share would be offered in any school would really be at the discretion of the principal.
Correct.
That, so none of our principals are, principals are going to be told that they have to fill vacancies with job shares.
That is correct.
Okay, okay.
It's going to be for a lot of those hard-to-fill positions, that maybe they still have a vacancy come July, which if we have a lot of attrition, then that's possible. But then we've got folks that can fill those.
Okay, all right. Ms., Owen, is your mic down?
I have the same concern, and I think when we're looking at talking to potential retirees about the possibility of making significantly more than they're making now, we also need to be very, very clear that that is a possibility. And I think it would be reasonable to also give them what they would make if they were substituting every day, or if they were working as a supply substitute for an extended period.
Absolutely.
Instead of just, just looking at that one number, because I think they, they might feel compelled by that one number, and then very disappointed if they were not rehired. And as we open it up to other counties around us, I would like to see us give first consideration to our employees.
Absolutely. I want to say something, too. You brought up a great point I failed to mention. Effective on July 1st of 2017, any person that is any retired teacher can sub an unlimited amount of time. So that is a great point. And so that's in a supply position, and it's also in a sub-position. So anything that's not their daily rate in terms of a supply or sub-position, so hopefully that'll help our sub-pull as well.
And that's just people who are eligible to draw retirement, correct?
That's correct.
Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's, has so many positives, and it would certainly be a positive for a teacher that wanted to come back as, and teach part-time, I think that's wonderful. I think my concern is the amount of principals and assistant principals that you've identified. So I, just throwing that out there as, you know, that's, that's definitely a concern that I think some other board members also shared, because that's a lot of people. So, thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Yes, and I also just want to say, I appreciate what you brought up, board member here, when you mentioned, if this is the only thing holding our educators back, then we should let them go so we can continue to have the best school system, have the best people in place. So I see both sides, but I think the outcome is greater.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was good, good overview. I think you need to be prepared for your phone to start ringing off the...
It's already started for some reason.
...wall now. All righty. To be clear, for everyone that is listening, though, this will not be finalized, though, until the vote in November. So if you have any strong feelings one way or the other, I'd encourage you to let your board member know. All right, moving on, public forum?
Madam Chair, we have no one signed up for public forum.
All right. Any comments, questions, anything from board members? If not, motion to adjourn?
Second?
Thank you, meeting's adjourned.